Hello, I'm Libby Fay, the mayor of Beano Vista. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We, this is the Board of Trustees for the town of Beano Vista. The date is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. The time is 7:07. And would you please silence your cell phones? If you'd like to speak during public comment, we'd like for you to sign in to let us know that. And if people are on Zoom and they'd like to speak, they just need to raise their hand. If you're on telephone, there's another procedure which we can tell you about. Paula, could we have a roll call, please?
Me or Fay?
Here.
Trustee Cobb?
Here.
Trustee Hilton Hingo?
Here.
Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee LaCretzi?
Here.
Trustee Rowe?
Here.
And trustee Swisher?
Here.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has one nation under its own head, with liberty and justice for all. Just as you have in front of you an agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anyone have any discussion or changes in the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Jenkins, would you like to second it, Cindy?
Second.
Swisher? Are all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And then, in addition to that, we have a consent agenda. These are minutes from different advisory boards. Sometimes some contracts that are under $25,000. The kind of clerk's monthly report is in there. So does anyone have any items that they want to discuss? That are in the consent agenda that you'd rather have outside of the, outside of that consent agenda?
I have a simple question for the town clerk report. How are we doing on the STR? Are we close to capping out on them?
On the, you know how we have the different categories and things? So on the category of out-of-county ownership, our LLC ownerships, we are capped out on that category. And there is no licenses on the waiting queue at this time. The ones that are in county residence, but there's not, it's not their primary home. You have 31 licenses available in that category.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Cindy.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, Gina's second again. I think you made the motion.
Yeah, to approve the consent.
Okay, Rowe, LaCretzi. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The motion passes. We will move on to public comment. Paula, is there anybody on the list? Me and Fay, there is no one on the list this evening, okay? How about Phillipa, is there anyone on Zoom? On telephone?
I see a hand. Mike, can you open that?
Yes, Larkin, you should be able to talk. You may need to unmute.
If we can't connect, maybe she, if she does manage to connect, we could have her later.
Guess so.
Then that brings us to staff reports. And Phillipa's going to dominate that discussion.
Sorry.
If we can ask her.
We have great people from the public here to present way more interesting things this evening. So I will, I will get through it timely. So first off, I wanted to recognize Chief Morgan who left, but I'll embarrass him anyway. Well, he will share more about this at the next, at his report next meeting. But what a tremendous job he did, leading an exercise, a large-scale exercise in town this past week, focused on the school in response to a major incident at the school. And he has a lot of amazing photos he will share with you. But I, and this is one of the community center, which was serving as a, as an EOC during the, during the event. And it was a tremendous support from multiple agencies, well over 100,000, 100,000 people participated in that, that exercise from all over the county. So great opportunity for the team to learn. And, and you know, hopefully we will never have to experience that kind of thing, but in our community. But it's, it's good to be prepared and a lot to, a lot to build on with that. And so I just want to recognize Chief Morgan for the leadership he, he demonstrated during that. It was really, really impressive. So a lot to be proud of from our community. That's great. Not the most exciting picture, but the shell of the police station here, the construction has begun. And we are very excited about that. An opportunity to have kind of a, you photo op kind of situation there. But yeah, they're, they're tearing things up and they're moving. So it's great to see. So we hope to have the new police station open by next spring. Equally excited, long-term here, the board has approved the purchase of the Bray Allen Extension Water Right. And so we are, we are moving towards final closing on that and paying our first of three payments on the total purchase price. And so what I'm asking for the board tonight, just so that we can keep our budget in sync with the, the decision to purchase this water right. I'm asking for a motion to amend our budget. We did not capture that in the, the mid-year adjustment, so that's why we're doing this now. But it would be allocating $400,000 from the water fund to purchase, towards the purchase of the water right. Again, that's the first of three payments over the next three years. And then also allocating 25,000 from the water fund towards engineering and another 25,000 towards legal to start the process of going to water court and getting that new water right converted to municipal use. We do expect that to take about one to two-year process through water court. So this is to get us started and we would reflect any remaining costs in the 2023 budget for that. So I'll pause there. That is a motion that we would like to make.
Is there someone who would like to make that motion?
I, I will, I just have a question, Phillipa. Can one and two be in the same motion or do we have to separate that?
They can be together.
Okay. Oh.
Would you like to state?
I have a volunteer, didn't I?
So that Paula can get it down.
Yes, I will make a motion to amend the budget to allocate 400,000 from the water fund for the first installment of the purchase of the Bray Allen Extension. And to allocate up to 25,000, $25,000 additional funds from the water fund for engineering costs and up to $25,000 of additional funds from the water fund for legal costs, both associated with water court for the Bray Allen Extension.
I'll second.
We have Jenkins, Cobb, okay. All in favor? Actually, we need a roll call on that. Paula, would you call the roll, please? Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Cobb?
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Hingo?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi?
Yes.
And trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The, the final part of that is, is more for your awareness. When, when the board approved the resolution for the purchase and selling agreement for the water right, it did allow the town administrator to sign amendments to that agreement. And we recognized that we are paying, what you could call it, what you can consider a flat rate or flat fee interest for the owner carrying this payment over the course of three years. So that would be an additional 25,000 in year two, 2023, and another 25,000 in 2024. That will be reflected in the budget and the board will ultimately be responsible for considering to approve that. But that's, that's for your information, just for clarity of process. That amendment has been signed by, by me. We're proceeding forward. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Joel. Sure you were in there.
And that concludes my report, this, this report.
Very good. Now, I understand that you're the treasurer now as well.
Say it correctly.
So I do like to now call that treasurer.
There we go. We are excited to have a new team member in the finance department, Becky Schmitz. She joins us as a part-time finance clerk. And most important thing to me is it's, Jonna and Lisa, the other two members of the finance department, are very excited about this. This provides much-needed relief for both of them specifically. They both work a lot of hours, a lot of overtime. But really what it opens up is human resources is a part of the finance. And Jonna has a, has a great skill set for that and a passion for that. But she gets stuck with the council table and payroll and all these things that you can't, you can't budge off of that. So I'm very excited to have Becky. She's, she's already off and going. This is week two and great to have her, so I recognize that. And then kudos over to Sean and, and his team and extended team he's built up for the water treatment plant. But we did receive 300,000, additional $300,000 grant for design and engineering towards the, the water gallery expansion project. So more, more money coming in to help, help with that. So we're excited and grateful to receive that. Let's see, so this is my first report, recognizing sales tax. So the month of May is reflected in my report. It was good to see, and so you can see there how May actually compared to the budget and then 2021 for May. So it puts us at year-to-date about five and a half percent over, over the original budget. So just to remind you, when we do a mid-year budget adjustment, we're almost looking at two books as we move forward a bit. So I want to highlight here that year-to-date, we're nearing $100,000 in excess sales tax over budget. But really, a lot of those dollars have been allocated to other projects. Think about the wildfire mitigation, some other budget adjustments. So, so really, we're looking at this amended budget number kind of moving forward. So happy to dig into that if you have any questions. And then again, we are able to split up our remote versus local business in terms of our town sales tax. So you can kind of see how that's trending a bit between local and remote. And town expenditures and payroll, things that have happened since our last meeting. And then finally, we did have a host of expenses over 2000. I do want to recognize that I did leave off something here on RJAs payment, which is the architecture firm that has been working with us on the police station. That was a, almost their final payment, but it was for $104,087. So I missed that, but other than that, I'll take any questions. And sales tax graph.
Oh, yeah. Good, thanks, Phillip.
You're welcome. I will bring the second quarter report at the next meeting.
We appreciate all the extra work you're putting in.
Thank you.
Young pay for, so we have, before we had the GMCO for street desk control. Is that main?
Sorry, I shouldn't have asked for questions.
Sean, the, the street dust control.
How many unpaved streets do we have now?
Well, I could probably tell you, so we have about just under three miles. The big one being West Craig, Oreo Road, 321 west to where it's, 321. Or yeah, and, and then we have some portions of, of the river park that we do some light desk control on, a little concerned because of the proximity to, to the river that area. So we give it light coating down there and a couple of the short streets with the road right away, street behind town halls, another application site.
Any other questions? Okay. So I think we're moving on to Joseph, is that right? Planning Director?
Good evening, ladies and trustees. Thank you all for your time. I won't go through every, every item on my report, but I'm happy to take questions. Couple of things I just wanted to highlight. The first meeting at the top of that page, just a brief note that we are in line with what I understand to be both statewide and national trends that building permits are down year-over-year. We're about 40 to 45% lower in number of building permits that we've issued for dwelling units compared to this time last year. So I just think it's an important reminder for us all that the local conditions are not only trending with other conditions statewide, but they also have ramifications on our housing issues and other ramifications in our local economy. Couple of other notes, notice under planning commission there. Number one, we are excited to have next steps to bring forward our housing affordability code audit, report recommendations. This will be in sync and at the same sort of in collaboration with the updated housing needs assessment, which the JP Housing Authority is publishing eminently. So just wanted to highlight that for you that I will, in September, consultants that have been doing that work are going to be hosting a couple of public meetings, engaging with the P&amp;Z Commission on August 17th and then coming before you in September for that discussion. So we'll have pretty robust set of recommendations based on housing needs data for you all to consider how we might move forward with actions related to our Unified Development Code or development procedures and like, so I'm excited for that conversation. Other than that, I will probably just, that you will ask any questions you might have.
I have a question about it. On the Crossman's Edition Purchase and Plan, what, what's, what's planned there? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so we have had at the staff level, a series of meetings with folks that have just recently purchased Crossman's Edition. So for those of you not familiar, that's the about 220 or so planted lots from our original town class that are just south of Tractor Supply and north of Crossman's Avenue. So those have come under new ownership and the owner, new owners have been engaging with us around their vision for that area. They have indicated a strong preference to come forward with a sketch plan and a major subdivision process that may be ready near the end of September for a joint meeting with you all on planning zone commission. So we have yet to receive a formal application, but that is the, those are conversations we have so far.
Thank you. It's great to see Crossman, or 350 is getting widened. Very nice county project.
County.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question for Joseph. When you begin discussions with developers, either minor or major, during that process, when, when does the discussion on as far as water and SFPs and what we have available, is that an upfront discussion or is it toward the end of the process?
Yeah. So both with this particular conversation with Crossman's Edition buyers, but also in general, water and SFE is, SFE used or manned is usually one of the first things that we talk about, especially when it's something this large. We are very clear with potential buyers and usually they're asking as well about the risk of the fact that we don't have 100% of the water they may need. For instance, with this particular development, it could end up going beyond the current SFEs that we have. We're very upfront with that, with these, these developers and also engaging with them in the questions of what do they need to do in order to mitigate that risk and in order to make sure the town is able to support their vision. And that's, that's been an involving conversation. Joel's been absolutely critical in that and helping guide us through how we think about the town's journey on how much water we have left, our water rights portfolio, our conversations with LEP RARK and other partners to make sure that we're providing as accurate information as we can.
So as far as the town, the board's involvement in that, in that decision-making process, how do we make that final call and if we allow those SFPs to be given up? Or is that a staff decision? Or is that, does that come to us as far as allocating that water for that development?
Yeah, so water is not typically obligated until the final plat stage of our subdivision process. And so in this instance, if we think about Crossman's Edition as an example, they will come before you all with a sketch plan with their vision. And I'm sure there will be many questions around water, water usage from our plans. And I would hope that that's taken away by them as one of the key priorities to think about. Good. Then as they enter into preliminary and final plat stages, there's no obligation town has to provide them water until that moment that final plat is approved. So that's part of the decision-making process and part of the, the work that both staff, P&amp;Z, and you all do through that, through those public hearings and discussions to weigh whether or not we have enough water to obligate. And if not, how that, how the developers are going to play into that, what, what, what we're playing.
Great, thank you.
There will be a recommendation from staff, I'm saying, when you, when you are planning a zoning and the board sees it, and then it's the board's decision whether that's appropriate or they, you know, need to go forward with it.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that.
Other questions for planning?
Page 40, major PUD amendment for South Main. Does the board vote on that or does it just go through planning and zoning to approve?
Absolutely. So our Unified Development Code requires that major PUD amendments are treated very similar to rezoning process, which means that they go through a public hearing and P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z offers a recommendation to the board. And then there's a public hearing. So we would absolutely expect this application to come before you all at a minimum for a public hearing when, when the applicant gets the information.
So we will get much more information on that in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Cindy, there's also the development in addition to the PUD.
And then I reread this a couple of times and I didn't know if I was just missing something. But page 42, explain the crucial, how it's crucial to understand about this 1762 ballpark number in relation to the available SFEs currently on hand. So we do not have as much water on hand as you're saying, or there's something crucial that I'm not understanding?
So this dashboard, that's a static note that we have on there to help reminder or put in context for both the board and the public that at our current municipal boundaries, if they were theoretically built out to full capacity, we would need far more water than we currently have. Okay. That's what I noticed.
Thank you.
Very important stuff. Any other questions for planning? Okay, then we will move on to Public Works. Sean?
Hi, thanks, ma'am. Trustees, good evening. We'll start with water. So yeah, big demand months coming our way. So June, July, August, use more water as our peak demand months. Maybe reflect on that with the recent water resource master plan that what produced for us last year. This month was the most water we made in, in that calendar year for a month so far this year and fantastic. I know that the, the weather and the rainfall has had a significant impact on keeping everybody as long as green. It's most of our parks and athletic fields. Fantastic that are accounted at 9% of this range. Kudos and thanks to our water team, Joe, Rick and Hawk for, for the work that they do. And we've been on this trend now for a little while now. So about this time last year is when we kind of identified some locations in town that were leaking water. Great, great stuff to see. I used a lot of imagery in this report, a tax for time. So I figured I'd use a lot of pictures to kind of distract my, my report this month. But there are a few, a few things that we could, we could talk about as we see them. So another month of cottonwood stream flow. So this is a staff gauge from the location that's behind the high school, middle school site. And so you can see that the, the top line is the, is the average stream flows. That bottom line that's kind of dancing around up and down is, is what we have right now. So, so far so good. Trustee Jenkins made a, made a comment in the last board meeting about maybe getting the water restriction flyer in the, the water course. We're planning on do that. So that's a voluntary flyer that we've kind of posted and we've used periodically in, in years like this. So it does seem to make a difference. Water expansion plan project, yep. I added a copy of what Phillip described. So fantastic, amazing team that we have. We're fortunate to have the people involved with, with this project, ClickCD, HKA, JBA, Swiftwater and our, and our town staff. So great work there. Couple of things that I don't have on the expansion project that, and we'll talk a little bit more later on the meeting. But we, we did, we did receive some information regarding the CWCB portion of the project. So we have this project based on funding sources. The grant from CWCB and the SRF funding for the, the low-interest loans. And so I think we're nearing, getting closer to the permitting that should be coming. So we'll be looking to get into the, the D-Wind portion of that project soon. And we'll have that here in the coming weeks to let you know when that happens. Streets. For the most part, we're just trying to keep up with a few things. And we're still unfortunately, you know, trying to find a sweet spot and schedule some of our larger projects. So hindsight's 2020, but it needs to be done at some point this fall. We're going to have to close Main Street one more time and do a surplus overlay. So I thought maybe Gold Rush Weekend. But looking probably after the, after the, maybe after September 5th in that timeframe, when maybe some of our families, kids go back to school. I think we need the temperatures, ground temperatures ideal for that application. But there's never really going to be a good time to do that. But, but we'll definitely communicate with our business owners.
Staff shared with Sean that if, if we're all willing to close it for special events, we should be willing to close it for street maintenance.
Yeah, maybe slurry seal days.
Yeah.
We'll keep, we'll keep you posted on that. But like first, second week in September is likely to be the target dates for that. And we still have a few paving projects that we have left to do in other areas. Parks, yeah, a little bit of staffing changes. Ryan Aubrey has, has amazing opportunity to forward in, in the station of life. And we're really going to miss him. He spent almost three years with us, so fantastic. He trained a really good staff and we have some people in place that are really, really talented. We'll miss Ryan's institutional knowledge and, and his relationships that he's cultivated with the team. But we're really excited to work with Allison, Chris and Griffin as well. So we'll move forward with that. I talked a little bit about trash, I guess, and some of the things that we're seeing. I didn't really think town could be busier than we were last year, but we are. There's a lot of people and that's fantastic. So one of the things that we saw and it was kind of becoming habitual, those kind of Main Street trash cans, very resistant trash cans, they're make fantastic shelves to stack things on. So we So we removed them from Columbine Park and we added another dumpster and you can kind of see those two pictures, what the difference is. I, I don't think there's any training involved. I think people see a dumpster and they don't see a trash can. It's going right to the dumpster. So. Um, some benefits aesthetically, it looks much nicer. Um, staff time, uh, we've mitigated some of the need to. On, um, and during the weekends, um, it was actually needed to maybe go to certain areas in town to three times a day. One of the big things that we're always kind of working with, you know, some of our agencies. Um, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, you know, and, and these are kind of things that, you know, we all, we all know happens. So when that trash is out at night, you know. Enjoy it. And so we're looking to kind of mitigate that in, in a, in a strong way. So bringing in dumpsters and being able to secure those for now. I think that's a, that's a solution. I think that, uh, um, it's really working well in Columbine Park for right now. So. Excited that we were able to kind of react and find a, a method that, um, that made a difference. Um, I drew a picture for you all. Uh, I did. That's, um, something like maybe we'd like to start seeing in, in certain areas. So maybe a larger sign in our parks, um, maybe. To put by, you know, twelve, twenty-four by eighteen or something like that, just to make create some awareness. And I think that's a big thing is just creating awareness of, of what we're doing and. Um, the next time probably be a little bit more, uh, this is our, it's, you know, clients that are. But I think that should help. You have some magnets coming. So locations on Main Street, on the trash cans and, um, and, and. I'll kind of jump through and, and kind of go down to, um, milestone and mission line and some, the stuff in between that. You're, you're pretty well aware what we're working on and, uh, projects. So we're working on capital engineering and development. But, yeah, um, yeah. Fantastic work, uh, our, our, our rep department. Ben Ito, he, he put together a, a great, uh. A plan for the Fourth of July and PD followed through. It was one of the smoothest events I've ever experienced. And did a fantastic job organizing that and getting everything out. So a lot to do, uh, between Main Street and, and the fireworks presentation. So. Other blue staff were, were, uh, making time to do that as well.
Question for Sean.
Hey, Mayor, I have one for Sean. Uh, I thought it might be an idea of the local business owners around where this trash from Columbine Park is. Maybe when you get your signage, you know, maybe they could maybe display that in, in their businesses. Kind of an educational thing. So it's kind of point of sale right there. You go, okay, just a reminder. When you go away with your product, you want maybe dispose of it properly.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Sean. I gotta jump in. Sean has taken the time to meet with the business owners and asked to put the signs up.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't, I didn't know that. So.
No, 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 I, I just, he's not gonna say it, but he has, he has put.
Was good.
A lot of effort into that. And respectfully declined as well. So I want to make mention of that too.
So I have a couple of things. Um, I got a hit on the Ivy League. I haven't hit on it in a long time. Major water loss still there. The other, the other is fantastic, but we still need to push for Ivy League to fix their stuff. And my second point was with the trash, the excessive trash that we have in the park. Can we make? I'm just, I'm not politically correct. Can we make Kase get another dumpster? Because that's where most of the trash is generated. So in my opinion, Kase is not taking care of their trash. And it is creating a problem in the public park.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so. Grant was gonna help me with this. I said, no, I think I got this. Um, but I've been talking with Grant about, you know. You know, our code, right? Our code captures perfectly well what, what literary and, and what, what our organs just, you know, considers, you know. A final offense, right? So I think, I think, I think, yeah, exactly what you said. I, I think one thing that we, we want to be able to do is. Continue to, you know, implement signage that kind of reflects like this positive culture, um, you know, so. And necessarily kind of getting into the packing, I got, we'll remove everything, but that's definitely an option. I mean, do we need two dumpsters at Columbine Park? If maybe there wasn't a, you know, a, a restaurant store, I doubt it, you know. So those are, those are things that just want to have a thoughtful consideration to it. Because I, you know, I, they're, they're stressed, they're taxed, they're overworked too. And, you know, and it's frustrating for them, you know. And, um, and it's frustrating for, you know, for us as well, you know, because we, you know, we all have our own perspective on it. But I think for me, the thing to big things to kind of implement a little bit more of a. Resource solution with, with more signage and I, and I, and I hate spending my budget on science that, you know, we, we, we all really recognize that, you know. What the right thing to do is sometimes, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm hitting the easy button, you know, on vacation, that kind of a thing. And, and, you know, and, and. I don't, I don't take it like too personally. And I think our community should either, but I do think that, you know, there's certain things, there's certain things that we can guide people to do. And so. Like long-term possibly, you know, a, 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 a small kind of, you know, review station at Public Works. Obviously, we need to use security cameras. Because we know that's just, you know, there's certain impacts that come with that opportunity for, um, community members and people coming through. We, we. All sorts of things are dumpster like, uh, printers or TVs, things like that. And that's kind of what happens with that. Uh, but I do think there should be, before we do kind of get to that next step, we, we really need to have, uh, some form of community, uh, service for. For people. I mean, we saw that with COVID when, when the, uh, state parks, um, kind of like, uh, places like that, people were on a camping. There was no trash services available. So that's why we wound up with the dumpsters at, uh, Columbine Park and at the, uh, tennis court softball location. And, and we kind of like them there. We need to make some closures for them and, and kind of beautify them. But I think, uh, but, yeah. Kind of ram, rambling a little bit, but I, but I do agree with you. But I do think that some language to, to convey that to our community.
And if there was an extra dumpster there, maybe your. People wouldn't have to empty the dumpsters in the park as often if it was. It wouldn't be such a strain on the town employees if they did have an extra dumpster there.
Yeah.
And that would be one that they pay for.
Yeah, I mean, so if we ever got to like a packing, I know slide is like there a couple of areas. And where, where, you know, if I'm visiting, where am I supposed to go? Um, maybe, you know, the businesses are locking up their dumpsters. Maybe, you know, maybe it's harder to find that. Resource. And so I, I don't know if Public Works is a good side or not, but that's kind of what's been on my mind.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of a waste away.
You know, it's not, I feel like it's not town's responsibility to deal with Kase's, um, trash. And that's kind of what town has been doing for a long time. So if there's any way we can get some teeth on that between you and, and Grant to. Make them pay or take care of it, then I'd be for that. I think it's, you know, it's coming up a nice park that we have right on the creek there. So, you know. Do we even have to have any trash or dumpsters there? Yes, it's a park, but. Or signs that say. Not, no restaurant trash or something. I don't know. It's, it's hard to figure out, but it's very obviously K's trash. So. With the Ivy Week, um. Percentage loss, is that factored when we factor in our, uh. SFEs and. I'm forgetting the words or acronyms, but is that factored in to those numbers and how much? Housing water is, so is that including or without that loss? Yeah, so we, we factored it a couple of ways and, and, um, we recognize it because it passes through our master meter. So we know a known quantity of SFP loss based on that value.
For the audience, the, the Ivy League is the golf course area. So it's not in the town, but it is serviced by town water. For an extra fee.
We did, uh, Denver, we did the, the, the math or, uh, just so you are aware that, uh, the loss, when it was a big leak, was about. Summer use made forty S, forty SFP.
Okay.
Post-bleak, it's probably down to twenty-ish.
Yeah, it's half of the loss of what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Identified some twenty houses worth of water is lost a month.
Sean, I have a question for you. On the, uh, the last page of your report, it says that we have the upper tank exterior painting RFP is still underway. I'm wondering if we can add something in there that says we'd rather have rather than just tan, we'd like a decal or something. With the town logo on it or, you know, just something a little more attractive.
I, yeah, I, 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 um, I, we talked about it, maybe. Oh, maybe last month or the month before. So I, I did, um, take your thoughts and I did, uh, bring that to. Engineering, um. Department that's working on the RFP for us. So, um, we could look at, um, that as a, as a group. And once the RFP is done, so you can see the impact to, to the budget that that would, that would have. And then we could kind of look forward. If the board was to approve, say a mural some kind of on that, um, then we could look at that. But I think that, that would be something that we probably. Maybe, uh, we'll, we'll see what the project comes, but we have a, you know, we have a X amount of money that we budgeted for that project and include. A mural, it just includes the rehab of the tanks. Uh, we could look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Public Works? Okay, um, so now we have the Recreation Supervisor. Is that Shane Basford?
Yes.
Okay, Shane, hi.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, yeah, Sean ended his report with a nice note about Ben and unfortunately I have some. Some bad news that he turned in his, um, letter of resignation, um, and his last day with the town is going to be Monday, August first. So, um, yeah, he, um, as you, sure you know, he was the special event facility manager. Um, and you know, he can, in his time, he completely revamped our, our process for facility bookings and, and special event applications. And, you know, the, the whole special event process is, is a lot more smooth and a lot more. You know, it's more comprehensive and time consuming, but you know, we have a lot better understanding of what's going on at all of these events. And, um, are better able to serve the events, um, you know, with the equipment they request, street closures and things like that. So. You know, the, the special events have been running extremely smoothly, like Sean said, um, and, um. Now, yeah, now we will have a, a big opening to fill. Um, you know, he's been an extremely valuable asset to our department and, uh, he will definitely be missed. In the short term, um, we're going to use, um, Jenny, Jenny Depew, our administrative assistant. To help cover some of the facility bookings. Um, and I will be covering the special event side, um, for the short term. Um, but we are going to look to fill the special events role, um, right away. Um, and then the facilities role will look to fill, um. Coming up, um, in twenty twenty-three, um, you, you, you'll all see that in, uh, in the budget, budget presentations coming up here in the next few months. Uh, also on special events, um, last meeting we had, um, that conversation about special event capacity, um, and you know, really since that meeting. Um, I've took the time to kind of speak, um, with everybody, you know, I meet with on a regular basis, you know, town department heads. Our recreation staff and our recreation advisory board to, you know, really try to find other, other solutions to that problem. Um, of, you know, being overloaded with the amount of special events. Um, and you know, we've had a number of, of great ideas come in from, you know, a number of different people. Um, where we're currently at is we are kind of analyzing, um, the data. Um, that was one of the requests from the Recreation Advisory Board. Was to get really good data on, um, each special event in kind of a, a matrix format. And, um, so we can better evaluate, um, you know, when or, you know. When would we need to limit the capacity i- if it needs to be limited at all? You know, are there certain weekends that are being overloaded? Or, um, having too many, you know, big things going on in, in one weekend, um, you know, like for example, the Fourth of July was a. Um, great example, you know, there was a, a street, street closure and fireworks and, um, art in the park and all that kind of stuff. And. You know, we are limited on that weekend. Is there other weekends where that, that needs to happen as well? So, um, right now we're just collecting some, some data. Um, that's kind of one of Ben's last tasks before he takes off. Um, and then hopefully next, uh, like next month, next meeting, we'll have some. Um, you know, potential so, solutions and, and ideas to, you know, help the, the special event process go a lot smoother. Um, and, um. Help us handle the, you know, fifty special event applications a year versus the thirty that we used to get, um, in a better fashion. Um, on the programming side of our department, um, we're kind of in a transition time, um, between summer and fall programs. And we wrapped up youth baseball, girls softball, um, wrapped up our youth mountain bike skills clinic, um, you know, all of those. Um, we, we held a, a Rocky Skills Challenge. Um, we're in our last week of adventure camp. Um, next week we'll start our last session of swim lessons. So we're really starting to wrap up our summer. Um, but you know, we also just opened registration for soccer yesterday. So we're kind of trying, you know, coming out of soccer or coming out of summer and going straight into fall. So, um. Ready, ready to, to go again for, for another season. Uh, but the, the summer programs have gone extremely smooth, um, pretty much all of them, um, that we have a capacity for have been filled. Um, and, you know, I think people are, are really enjoying being able to get out and, and recreate in the various ways that, that we offer through our department. On the capital side, um, of our department, um, we, uh, as you guys, you know, might see over there on Main Street. Um, the pickleball courts, um, have started construction. Um, we, um, just got our concrete permit today. I'm still waiting on some, some other permits for that program, for that project, but, um, yeah, construction is going and. Um, you know, hopefully if everything works out, we're pouring concrete, um, this coming Monday, August first. Um, but you know, if you drive by now, you can start to see the, the, uh, fence posts and shade structure posts and things like that starting to. Um, go in. So it's, you know, starting to look like an actual, you know, future pickleball court over there. Um, the McPhelamy Park stage, um, is under, um, professional, um, services agreement with Arc Valley Welding. And, um, the Chambers fundraising campaign is still rolling along. Um, we did receive another, um, generous donation from Tom Rawlings. Um, of twenty thousand dollars. Um, you know, a- as you guys know, when you approve the PSA, um, he pledged thirty thousand dollars. Um, he actually went ahead and just donated twenty of that thirty that he pledged, um, already. And then I believe we are at the, um, point in the Chambers fundraising program to, um, cover the costs of the PSA. Um, but you know, I think a little bit more funding is still needed to, um, fund like the install of the bricks. Um, but that project, um, should be starting up here in, um, about mid to late August. Um, kind of once the, once the summer's over, we'll, we'll start getting that stage built. Um, and then our Whipple, um. Trail rehabilit, rehabilitation project is currently out for, um, proposal. Um, that I believe the deadlines on, the deadline on that. Uh, actually, I don't remember the, the twenty, uh, the twenty-ninth, um, is the, the deadline on that. Um, and so we'll have that, uh, ho- hopefully we'll get some good RFPs back and have that all in front of. Um, you, you trustees, um, on September thirtieth for approval of that contract. Yeah, uh, you can see in the report, a bunch of other projects and programs going on, but, um, if you have any questions about those, feel free to, um, let me know.
Thanks, Sam.
I, I, I have a quick comment, if that's okay. I just, um, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Ben Eichel. Um, when I read this, I was super bummed out. Uh, I've had a chance to work with Ben a few times for, for the event we put on and. He does a huge job. I don't know if he's there tonight or listening in, but I wanted to recognize him for his hard work and appreciate everything he's done for the town. And tackling all those, all the events. There's obviously, as we know, quite a few. Um, so just a, a good job to Ben and, and all the best. To him and his future endeavors, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Gina. I'll certainly pass that along.
Well, thank you. He's also been very helpful with our tax preparation. No, thank you. He's also been very helpful with our tax preparation volunteer. He, he's just really got everything all set up and organized. Very nice. We'll miss him. Any other recreation questions, comments? Okay, then we are ready to move to our business items. First of those has to do with our carbonate street development, specifically the childcare space. And I know we have some guest speakers on that. Is someone in the lead on this? Is that you, Joseph?
Yeah, I'll do a intro and then maybe come back.
Okay.
Well, good evening again. I'm excited to be back before you. Seems like maybe every other meeting cadence we have, chatting about Carbon Street, which is really exciting. I will just lay a couple of moments of context and groundwork and then I'll turn it over to Lisa Lamb, who's here representing the Shining Mountains Montessori School to give a presentation. And then I'll, I'll pick it back up and, and hopefully guide a couple of questions for you all to consider. My report on pages fifty-three and fifty-four kind of provide an overview of where we've been and where we are with Carbon Street in general, but specifically with childcare space. I'm not going to go into detail there, but as we wrap up after Shining Mountains presents, more than happy to dive into any of those details. I think the, the important question before us, or, or juncture that we're at, is that we're at a moment where we're preparing financial or legal agreements with fading west for the development of the project. We are nearing a stage over the next, hopefully, six to eight weeks where we're handing the project over to them. Based on these legal agreements that you all will, will craft and review over the coming weeks. And a really important piece of the project is this childcare space. As you all know, and you all directed as far back as October, childcare has been a very important priority to our community and a very important need that has lacked resources, space, operators, train staff, all those things. So over the past year really, but especially over the past six months, we've been focused on this idea that childcare space could be built at Carbon Street in the form of a corn shell of a commercial space. The town would eventually own, and then would be that space would be leased to an operator as yet to be identified. You all have helped guide conversations with our school district. And we are very fortunate to have a new childcare and Montessori school provider in town. Shining Mountains Montessori is currently using our chapel on Forest Square Park. And so staff has been working with them on this concept of Carbon Street and asking a question about their vision, their growth. And so want to turn it over to Lisa and ask that she present about, a bit about Shining Mountains, allow you all to ask any questions of them. And that would provide hopefully a grounding and a context for our local efforts in childcare for you all to make a decision on Carbon Street. So please, please.
Thanks, Lisa.
Hi.
Get your rain here.
Nice to see everyone. Thanks so much for your time. Mayor Fay, University Board of Trustees, town staff and guests, Lisa Lamb. And I'm speaking to you as the Director of Shining Mountains Montessori School. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration as always surrounding yourselves with what matters. Shining Mountains Montessori School is a Colorado nonprofit entity and it desires to collaborate with the town of Punavista in addressing the need for licensed childcare for children age zero to six. That includes infants, toddlers and preschools. We seek partnerships in the planning, building and creation of a beautiful childcare facility serving working families in our community. Slide number two. Oh, there it is. So let me first say that this presentation is maybe ninety slides, but we're going to go through them really quickly. Part of this is also a celebration for your efforts and our collaboration in creating such a beautiful, memorable early learning experience for children just in the last four months. This has been a year in the making. As of tomorrow, one year ago tomorrow, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, I stood before the Board of Trustees and then Mayor Duff Lacy and the town staff asking commission and your blessing to finalize a two-year lease of the St. Rosa Lima Chapel, formerly the BB Chamber of Commerce. So that's really exciting. Slide three. So this is my first load of my little Subaru Crosstrek, but I, you know, this is not going to be like, like the, anyway. So within the last year, SMMSS spearheaded the careful renovation of the, of the chapel built in eighteen eighty. And it took about six months to meet our state childcare licensing requirements with a lot of assistance from the Early Childhood Council as well as our incredible childcare licensed specialist. And my growing expertise on the matter of licensing requirements, we were able to also receive state funding through the Emergent and Expansion Grant, $50,000 to help with renovation costs, not cover them completely and startup costs as well. So included in that, slide number four, our, our friends, Mr. Ryan Kilkelly and Jay Dumas, who helped with the renovations. I just wanted to give them a quick shout out because they were incredible and they could have done other projects during the six-month period and made way more money. They decided to invest their time, their energy, expertise and humor and patience in making and creating such a beautiful space for children. And again, I, I thank the town and Sean Williams, the Parks Department for just also just working with us because the chapel is part of Forest Park Square. And we wanted to ensure that the park remains a part open to the public. It's just a sweet little Montessori school in the mix. So we thank you guys for your, for your time and your, your help with planning the renovation process and also the eighty-eight ramp. Next slide. We also had some help from our friends, our little friends, our older friends, painting some of our materials. Next slide. And then also our families who helped us in the planning and the vision and the support. Not just moral, but also financial and donations. So again, you guys have, you ladies and gentlemen have really spearheaded, spearheaded a community effort in providing a lovely childcare space. Slide, next slide. Yeah, and so to celebrate, we were actually, for the celebration, we were featured in the Central Mountain Small Business Development Corps Annual Edition for twenty twenty-one. We were the only nonprofit to be featured in this, in this report. And Mr. Philip Puckett, your name is in there as well. So that's fun. But it, it's a really good review of, of all the efforts that have been put into this project. I want to underline or highlight that this is just not me. A lot of my acquaintances have said, oh, your dream has come true. And yeah, it has, but it's more so of recognizing that there's a need and working with my own passion, my ability, my expertise and my vision for a community space for children and families. And then just telling people what to do, no, and asking for a lot of help. So it's been a really great experience and this is our Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting, which happened way too late, but that's okay. Next slide. Yeah, so just to recap real quick, as far as also what's, what's listed on your, on your document that I provided. So our programming started in April with the two-week soft, soft, no, sorry. With the two-month soft opening in the spring, followed by an eight-week summer camp. And this week is our last week of that summer camp. We currently have five employees, one director and one lead teacher, just Ms. Lisa Lamb. And we have four assistant teachers. We were very fortunate in, in finding dedicated and fun and professional staff who love working with children and have so many skills and talents to, to share with them. So in the culmination of our efforts, we provided licensed childcare for forty-five children in the last four months. So it's very exciting. Again, ages two and a half to six. But then we've also had some older friends join us for summer camp, or actually licensed for two and a half to thirteen-year-olds in anticipation of offering summer camp for older, older friends, older children in the future. So this is a little bit more about Montessori school. You're welcome to, to, you know, just walk through or visualize what it might be like in an everyday environment in our Montessori Children's House. I've received verbal and written confirmation that these photographs may be shared with you. So the gist of Montessori is it's the mixed age environment where children practice and experience compassion, tolerance, respect and peace. So we have a beautiful, rich learning environment intended for chat, for the children. Most everything is their size, including a toilet. So that's exciting and sinks. And we have sensory-rich materials, very minimalist materials that lead children to success. The adults are, were called guides. They match the children to materials that equate their abilities and success. Younger children learn from older in this mixed-age environment. Older children become leaders and all children guide one another and how to become, belong and contribute in their children's house community. So it's the utmost deeper, deepest respect of the child with a lot of beauty and natural elements and a hundred and fifteen-year proven methodology mixed in with place-based education and surrounding the children with love and warmth and a diverse group of adults and inviting locals in to share what they love is just a vision come true. So let's go on to our partnerships that we have, that we have formed. I've already spoken to the town of Punavista. And a lot of our other partnerships include the Chaffee County Community Foundation, who's currently our fiscal sponsor. We are working on our official five oh one C three designation. The Small Business Development Corporation, SBDC, has, has, has been kind of a guiding light, especially for me. I am more of a liberal arts, little hippie Montessori teacher. But at the same time, I think I have a mathem- mind when it comes to planning for what people really want to talk about is the finances of a project. So I appreciate their help. Another great partner has been the Chaffee County Early Childhood Council. Sarah Romack has been excellent in her guidance and her connections. And prior to that, Janine Pryor, who ten years ago, when I first approached her with this idea, not ten years ago, the vision was for ten years ago. But this was maybe six years ago where I approached her and asked her about this possibility in the community. So, yeah, we're going to move on to SMMSS, perhaps Carbon Street. Before I get into that, I want to express my hope and my my intense, my intense hope that the Carbon Street Childcare Facility becomes reality and it doesn't need to be us. It doesn't need to be, you know, me or the school itself. We need to have an additional childcare facility in this community. I could ramble on and on and you don't want to listen to that. But our wait lists for most centers are upwards in the seventies and eighties. As we all know, it's, lack of childcare relates to issues with workforce, housing. And we just hope that we can help remedy and/or collaborate now or in the future with town or other partnerships and other investors to create a six-year span of childcare and learning environments for our members of the community. We are a young organization. We're only four months into our, our school year. We have yet to accomplish our first academic year. But when we were approached with this idea, initially, we were overwhelmed as far as our planning goes. We were already planning to expand. But we were planning to expand at the earliest by year three. A facility, like I mentioned before, we need an actual facility for increased childcare in this community. So that's why, as you can see here on the screen, we've already have a general view, a general line, a blueprint as far as numbers go, not financial numbers, but square foot licensing is such a, a challenge. But it is easily overcome and there are so many other centers that have accomplished it, accomplished creating a facility that can house children zero to six. So we're really excited for this opportunity. Again, we're a young organization. But given the proposed four thousand four hundred square foot facility, SMMSS oversees reaching at least six, forty-six children between the ages of three to, three months to six years at one time. Yet that could reach up to sixty-two depending on if one of the rooms, I won't get into that, but if one of the rooms either becomes two infant or one toddler space. So depending on the need, we will be able to adjust that part of the building to the need of the community. As far as funding goes that we've, excuse me, that we have received. So we, we received federal and state funding. First off, I mentioned the Emergent and Expansion Grant of $50,000, which according to Sarah Romack, there's going to be a new art, there are going to be additional RF, RFPs for the next grant cycle. And because our planning for, for Carbon Street Building and/or a future expansion includes infants and toddlers, that funding increases to upwards of $200,000. We also are focused on circle grants. I gotta, I gotta take a few more grant writing classes, but our, our board is excellent. And I have faith in our collaboration and our reaching out to community members and writing a grant to receive grant funding to hire a grant writer. Employer-based childcare grant, this program will provide, provide financial assistance to, financial assistance to employers to construct, remodel, renovate or retrofit a childcare center to provide licensed childcare services on or near site to its employees. That's all I'm going to say. It's really exciting. For-profit businesses, organizations may, can receive upwards of $800,000 in matching funds. Let's see. Okay, let's move on to staffing. So we, like I said, we were, I, I say we're fortunate, but it's almost like we attract those who are passionate about the same, about the same needs in the community, but also have the same approach to what our work with children is, what our work with families. And I anticipate not having issues with staffing, although a lot of childcare centers have. I mean, I'm knocking on wood here. Again, we're only four months into our, our programming. But our, our offers include paid teacher training in exchange for a certain number of years, three years of remaining with our school after training is complete. By year three, we want to offer full benefits package. And the reality of the situation is if City Market is hiring at $18 an hour, childcare providers and childcare teachers, early childhood educators, they are going to be asking for a living wage, which $18 an hour is at the minimum of that in this community. I've been asked a lot about our tuition, which according to the state of Colorado is below the average. Granted, we live in a rural community. Most of that tuition does go towards our salaries. And yet, part of my strategic goal for this community school is also to legitimize our profession and not just as Part of my strategic goal for this community school is also to legitimize our profession and not just as Montessori teachers. But childcare providers who are essential workers, just like any of us are. We're all essential workers in our own right. But I feel really passionate about. Recognizing that this is that salary and pay. And cost of living and cost of housing. As you all know, is, is a, is a reality check for certain aspects of our community, including childcare workers. Tuition assistance and student scholarships. We are a non-for-profit. We are also a CCAP provider. CCAP stands for Colorado Childcare Assistance Provider and is based on financial data entered into the CDHS peak database. These rates fluctuate based on county levels, so it's a daily rate as well as what our tier of quality is. And again, we're a new organization and my goal is by the end of the year to receive at least a level three, if not four. Which means that. We as providers receive a little bit more funding as well as the families themselves, of course. Additionally, through the childcare operations stabilization workforce is still a sustainability grant. We are also receiving upwards of twenty-seven hundred dollars a month for nine months, half of which each month goes towards financial assistance. And scholarships and tuition assistance. We are also really excited about Colorado's universal preschool program. A lot of providers or school districts aren't as excited about that yet. It's definitely needed in our community. Because there are such few centers or facilities that actually offer licensed childcare. So the more of the state funds that can be siphoned into family childcare provider homes as well as other centers. And helping to diversify private, non-for-profit and or family childcare homes. I think is a winner. So what that means, so it's called UPK. It's set to offer four-year-old children ten hours of free preschool funding per week. And it has yet to be made official, yet this UPK can also reach three-year-olds as well as older children. Who require specialized learning accommodations. And I say right now that we will be, I use the universal preschool provider in the state of Colorado. Because like I said, we all, we want to be a reflection of the community. And as you have seen, we are a reflection of the community and yet we also see that there are. Members in our community, families in our community, children in our community that would also like to join us, but they are unable to. We want to offer exceptional childcare and learning environments to all families in our, in our community. Additionally, we are open to local employer partnerships. Childcare tuition. Subsidies. And also the idea of perhaps making childcare not just for SMS, SMMs. But also family home daycare providers and other centers to receive employer benefits. That focus on childcare. Every space is an opportunity for child to learn, explore, become themselves and contribute to their community. If you would be interested in learning more, please come and visit us. We're very welcoming and the children are adorable. So I welcome any questions and or Philip, Philip, sorry, Joseph. You can wrap it up. Thank you for your time and. So do our families and our children.
You very much, Lisa. So I, yeah. I would welcome and encourage any mayor trustees, any questions directly about Shining Mountain Montessori. My intention in bringing them before you tonight was not to ask for your decision on them as a provider at Carbonette Street. But to offer an incredible education and hopefully inspiration to you in the childcare realm. They're doing great work. And Lisa obviously has a wealth of knowledge in this arena that we can all learn from. So to come back to the decision and. They ask for.
Copies of that chart. I can't read it.
Absolutely. So that, that chart was provided by Lisa to help demonstrate some of the licensing requirements. Square footage requirements per child based on age range, including outdoor space for licensed. It was very helpful just contextually and that's part of how Lisa came up with some of those numbers for the square footage is proposed at Carbon Street. So what I wanted to ask for tonight was direction from you all. You all have given direction in the past to include childcare space and we're at a point now where. Given that the school district was not the right partner for this space and that Shining Mountains may be. But we're not at a point where we can commit on either side. The fact is, we don't have an operator for this space. Nor do we know exactly when and who it will be. We have very promising local operators, but the fact is that there is risk. And there is costs associated with creating childcare space at Carbon Street. And so I would like formal direction from you all to make sure that this is a direction that we're committed to. Alternatively, if it's not, then to recognize and weigh the considerations on both sides. So on page fifty-four, the board packet, I do lay out two scenarios. Obviously, it's, it's yours. You're prerogative to create third or fourth scenarios as you may choose. But if we are looking for direction here tonight, again, not specifically about Shining Mountains Montessori, but about the childcare space past Carbon Street. So I welcome any questions and obviously Lisa's here as well.
Please, go ahead, Mark.
On the forty-four hundred square feet, I mean. Do you feel like with the kid you have and everybody that's wanting that space now? Will you be maxed out of time? Do you, do you feel like you could grow out of this space in the near future? Or you think this is pretty good, this, this square footage for a while as far as what you're gonna, you know, require?
I think it will be, it will suit our expansion plans for, I would imagine, five to. Ten years. I mean, it depends on the growth of town, right? And hopefully, my hope is that another childcare facility will be able to open, open its doors. I do think that we would also have a waiting list, unfortunately. But. With our, with our young organization and the vision that we have to keep it. You know, small scale, even though this is kind of a large-scale expansion in our, in our, you know, current realm. We think that it would be suitable for what we have planned.
And I guess my question to Joseph, as far as the site, is there any room for expansion? You know, of something of this building in the future, if we need to do that, if they outgrow this building. You know, to make it more sustainable for them to stay in one place. I mean, is that a possible?
It's a great question and I think the, the answer is probably no. The, the. More or less forty-four hundred square feet thought about or conceptualized right now at Carbon Street is. Probably the maximum number of square footage we could include in the project. That being said, I would, I would love to see that space become too small for an operator. And, and see them expand elsewhere, but I, I don't think we would be able to commit to that size now and then expand it on that site in the future.
Yeah, just to find, just finally, on my personal note, ever since I've been involved in town and on the board. Now, on my second term, this has always been something we've been struggling with. And I think we have a great opportunity to move this forward and I would love to see this move forward.
Hi, everyone. Daniel Tom. I'm here on my personal capacity, not as county attorney. I'm on the chair of the school. Just some, you know, I, I think, just want to express that, you know, Lisa is actually the energy she has, the passion and I'm more of the. Let's get this done. No, I think there, there is money out there. I mean, we missed out on opportunity to apply for ten million dollars. There's ten million dollars, ten million dollars of grants that were available for shovel-ready projects. That were early childhood care centers and we missed out on that because there was no facility. We could have built out for that. We could have applied for it and it was like a four-month timeframe, wasn't it? Like four, five months. And that's the number one problem our community is facing is a first finding teachers. I mean, that's one of the biggest things, but finding places and you gave us our first little place and we love it. But for the community ourselves, for us to grow as a healthy community, we need these places, like we need dedicated places for childcare. And if we don't get that, you're gonna lose, I think, vitality in our communities. And, you know, and I think that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm here and I'm here to support her. But. I think we, we are willing to do this. I think it's a big, it's a big pull for us, but. I believe. I'm willing to support Lisa's passion and I think if we as a community can get this done. You know, I think she can get these seats in there. We would have, I guarantee nobody filled up. I think. We have kids out of county that want to be here as well, so I think it's not about filling these seats up. It's about having a space to put a school in.
So would your organization pay for finishing out the space? To where it's suitable as a childcare center?
And I think that's the kind of discussion we were initially having and. The timeframe and the cost, I think that's something we need to work in. And if we can figure that out, if we can figure out what the town's timeframe, you know, when you need someone in there. And whether, I mean, we're trying to become a five oh one C three. I think that's when a lot of the grant monies are opened up for us because that's when. Yeah, so we.
Do have a fiscal sponsor.
Yeah, but I think becoming our own five oh one C three opens up a lot of things for us as well. Having time also opens up a lot of grants. And I think that's a conversation. I mean, you know, we are interested. It depends on how big of that lift is, is if it's, you know. Raise two million dollars in six weeks, ain't gonna happen, but you know, if it's raised seven fifty or matching funds over a certain timeframe. I think we can do that and I think, you know, we would like at least to see what that conversation is. To see if this is capable for us.
I have a question. I just want to be sure. This would be an expansion. You would keep the chapel and also expand into Carbonette or Carbonette instead of the chapel?
We have not discussed that. I was actually thinking about this the other day that. I think, well, okay, number one, town might have other plans for the chapel. It is. A licensed space, so either. SMMs or a different provider could offer. It could be a toddler, an additional toddler childcare facility. We have not discussed that in short.
Clear if that was already determined?
Yeah, yeah. If anything, it could be like a startup, startup site for additional.
I could really need both or else we don't pick up that many incremental spaces. Now, if you don't keep both facilities going, we're talking about, you know, accommodating fifteen kids or something. Isn't very much.
Yeah. I will say that with our current waitlist, even though we would outfit Carbonette Street. And however many years, we do have. A waitlist where we could have two additional children's houses with a mixed age. Programming, so. I don't know. It, I, I just, yeah, we haven't discussed it yet as far as the beautiful St. Rosa Flumet Chapel. Thank you.
Sorry to jump on, but first a clarification. It sounds like you have roughly between eighty and ninety. Students or kids or friends that would be. Are in need right now of childcare, correct?
We don't. Other centers do.
Like in town, sorry.
The mean is, I believe, between seventy-five and eighty-five.
So this would.
On the waitlist.
Hopefully go a little bit over fifty percent of the current need, but accurate.
Right, and also part of the waitlist, though, are, are. Families that are planning on having children. Or just got pregnant, you know, it's, it's definitely a zero to six mixed age range that we are trying to. That we are trying to help. The high, the highest age range is the toddler as far as our waitlist goes. So just real quick, if you look at, if you look at the chart, I have the infant room. I have two infants room there. And the great thing with that is even though infants room, infant rooms are just very challenging to, to, in the licensing perspective. But depending on the need, that infant room, those two infant rooms could become one toddler room. So it can be, it can be adjusted based on the need. I think there would be enough interest as far as infants and infant programming goes, but. We, we can be a little flexible, surprisingly, with, with that first, with that first program.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted, oh, the, one of my main concerns or questions on this is staffing. I've been very fortunate with the current program, but. My, my, when we were talking to the school district, they were saying that's one of the biggest issues is maintaining staff, being able to afford to live up here. And at thirty dollars a day, that's kind of what we'd be shooting for, is that right?
No, that's not what we'll be shooting for. My intention in putting that amount into the document. Was to let you know that. As far as our mutual role in this child, this childcare desert scenario in rural communities. Is that thirty dollars a day is not going to support paying the bills and paying for the workforce that is required. So what we are, so just in short, what we're, what, what our tuition is for full day, Monday through Friday, following the academic year. Eight to three thirty is fifty dollars a day for our two and a half to six-year-olds. Which according to state statistics is still, is fairly low. And we wanted to, we wanted to start off low, even though that is quite a bit of money for certain families and we understand that. And we have the CCAP funding as well as. Our fundraising efforts and universal pre-K, which could potentially also help cover some of that, those tuition costs. Sorry, did I, did I, I don't know.
No, no, I'm just trying to, just trying to figure out. How we're gonna retain staff and so like the three-year, so I, I didn't know if that thirty dollars a day meant the eighteen dollars an hour you're talking more about. Or if it's a different number, mainly how we're gonna retain, except I think you have a very concentrated, dedicated team right now. I think once you try to expand and have more teachers, you have, it may not be that, it's like any startup, right? Your first five employees are, you know, die hard, die on the wall, full force, but then as you actually have to scale and escalate. People start talking about their pay and it changes, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, I mean, I think that's the same problem any large, I mean, large childcare facility is gonna have here. It's that balance. I. You know, I mean, I, I've been working on the county side and how we, how we address this through CMC. Versus having students start here, like high school students or young, trying to get credits. I think this is a way where we can try to be innovative and. Find young students that wanted to learn on, learn on the ground first and then go to school. I think there's certain ways that we can try to be innovative on this, but I think, I think that's your number one. I mean, that's our one problem. I think you do have lots of people that care about childcare. But, you know, I mean, reality is they can clean houses and make more money and work less than do provide childcare. And, you know, that's why. I mean, that, some of the goals, I mean, you know, that's why, you know, we have, when we talk numbers, it's like, we're really not, I mean. And I think Lisa's first priority is making sure her staff gets paid well. I mean, you know, well for teachers, well for the area. And, you know, so they can live and work here, so that's, you know, I think that's why. A partnership with the town would allow us at least balance tuition to a way that, you know. And our goal is not to make this, you know, lead school. It's, it's for, it's for workers, you know, it's for families that need care. What even different alternative care as well that I think should be available to people in town. Um, and what, e- even different alternative care as well, that um, I think should be available to people in town. So, yeah, and I'm not trying to, yeah, no, no, I'm not.
Like, open eyes, that's what we're walking into.
You have, you realize that this is also a state focused issue, state and national. Colorado is, is an excellent state to start a project like this. Um, I mean, COVID was a disaster on so many different levels and, you know, I mean, we. Talk about all that, but it was kind of a wake up call. Um, as far as what, what a community needs in order to thrive, and one of those areas is childcare. Now, as far as the workforce stabilization grant, um, right now, we're only at twenty-one hundred dollars. Half of that does go towards financial assistance, but with our increased rating, we will receive more funding. Which helps with professional development and an increase in salaries. Um, so that's just the start. My enthusiasm and my hope and kind of, I think it needs to happen, there's no other way. That community, that communities can, can, okay, make ends meet, but also thrive. Is for, is for the workforce on, in all different arenas to be supported, especially those. Who provide essential um, services such as childcare.
And with that three year training period that you'd be offering for folks who's like, I'm also thinking about recruitment, like.
Sure.
Cause you're not having to recruit people who have previous certifications and training, which then be a higher cost. But if you're training people all the time, do that, would they be included in that ratio, the three to one? Or in terms of adult to student ratio, it's no, the teacher you're training or?
Yes, so it's an apprenticeship that's onsite.
So they'd be included in that ratio?
Yes.
Okay.
And they would receive um, starting pay for, you know, assistant teacher and or moving up to the, to the lead teacher on the salary.
And then benefits would kick in after that three years?
Yes, we aren't able to offer benefits yet, but we, we hope to in the future, I mean, we have to, that's the thing, like, we, we're going to figure it out. And I know that's ideal and it's annoying, but it needs to happen. And with your support and our, I don't know, it, there's no other way.
Yeah.
Um, and we stand before you and say that it's gonna happen, and I think we've made it, we've made it, we've made this happen so far, so. Um, again, with your help. It's a good, it's, it's good stuff.
Um.
It's good.
What's your, so you're wrapping up your camp right now. Um, and school doesn't, doesn't start for another month. Um, so are you doing any kind of programming or what are the families doing? Um, in the between time and kind of similar to what's gonna happen if you have this space, if you had a month or a few weeks?
Sure, so uh, our families were notified prior to summer camp that we would have a three week intermission. Um, we have been going at this for about a year and a half nonstop. Uh, I have some professional development uh, days, not a full week set up for our staff. Um, who haven't necessarily received my focus as far as, as, as superb training goes. As far as a monetary environment goes. I will also anticipate starting my circle grant application, so I'm still, we're still working, I'm still working. I know the, the three week break has been a difficult uh, you know, introduction to like the summer camp. Our, our vision is to have summer camp throughout the whole year. Um, and we've had some, some great employees over the summer, also a pair of professionals from the district. Who wanted to come and make some extra money, but also miss working with the kids. Um, so as far as finding staff for the summer camp, I also have high hopes for finding um. Local residents and repeated, repeated uh, residents to come and, and help us in the summer. Yeah.
Yeah, so it says around, around staffing a lot, too.
Yeah, sure, if I, if, well, I, I probably. Need to scale back some of everything that, you know, I do, or, but, I mean, if this is a startup, so, um. Yes, but like I said, it's gonna be an issue and we're gonna, we're gonna find a remedy for it. Maybe our best.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's to the, it's your hand in the document here, so we can kind of weigh the differences. I was just trying to, the reason I was asking all this question is to understand kind of the headwinds we have going into the childcare program, not that it's. Not worth going, it's kind of, so we know.
Yeah.
The differences between these two options, what happens if we decide not to go through with the childcare? And we release those to housing units, would that drop like the average AMI percentage that we're shooting for? In the housing, or what would that necessarily get the town and the workforce?
Yeah, so um, it's. The, the model right now is that the cost of the corn shell of building the childcare space is being paid for by the developer. And would come back to town at zero dollar cost. Therefore, the cost of that space, which is estimated right now to be about one point two million dollars. Is going to be paid for through the rents of the project over that ten, fifteen year period of baiting my stones project. Therefore, that cost is a burden on the house affordability. Um, so as we move forward over the coming weeks in developing these legal agreements, that affordability target is going to be front and center. And at the moment, has it baked in these costs of the childcare court shell? If we delete that corn shell and we either just delete that square footage and don't replace it, or we replace it with housing units. Um, we increase the amount of subsidy that's coming into this project because we're not asking for that one point two million dollars of expenditure. So we would see affordability uh, increase or, or the AMI level decrease. Um, I think from a, a consideration standpoint, and what I love uh, hearing from. S M M S is, is that, that sort of non affordability or AMI benefit. Um, that I think is on you all to weigh, which is, um, we would see a, a, a increase in affordability rates. Or, or decrease affordability rates if we don't have childcare space. Um, we would also not have childcare space. And so I think uh, it's hard for, for staff to articulate which one's better. Uh, because it really comes back to that holistic community vision that you all have.
Yeah, it just helps clarify in terms of, you know, this or that, and it sounds pretty like the space, the available space. Is, has been a major hindrance for other grants and funding down the road. Right, like other funding opportunities that would drop childcare costs.
Well, and for, for providers to expand and not just us.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, real estate, as we all know, is private.
But, you know, I, I, I think there's state and federal monies available right now. And it's aimed at early childcare facilities. So, and all of them aren't looking at startups, like, you know, like having a vision, but actual startup plus something tangible. Um, I, I think, you know, a lot of these have gone, but there's money still being dumped in to this by the states and feds. To address this problem.
And is there, if it's, uh, I'm guessing if it's a flood of money currently from the states and fed, that's tied, if I were to guess, to cares and some of the other. Uh, funding mechanisms came in, so there's, is there timelines in terms of, once this is available, you have to start the program at that stage to start implementing it?
And I, I think, I think that's the hard part for when we started was, we were a new facility, so Kenny, the hard part, I think. The biggest part after having something a shell is getting it prepared, but then getting it licensed. Um, but I, I really do think that they, you know, the last grant that we saw was. If you had like something, like a build, basically if you had a building and you just needed money to put in everything, build it out. As a childcare facility, I think you, you could pick, you know, they were willing to give you almost anything to meet that need.
But the, is it like they have to be used by this date?
Um, I think that.
Some are, yeah.
So I just, if they were tied to cares and everything, I would assume they works.
And a lot of these, a lot of these grants, such as the emerging and expansion grant, um, I foresee them. Um, repeating RFPs, uh, or offering RFPs every year hopefully. But the circle grant, for example, it does, it, it does have certain dates by which you need to. Um, liquidate all the funding that you receive, but the circle grant is an annual grant. If not, I.
Joseph, would you like a motion on the pathway forward?
I would, I would prefer a motion, um, if, if that would be possible, and I think, uh. I, I would just wanna reiterate that the motion before you is um, essentially committing to the unknown in the childcare space. Um, or not, and acknowledging as we've all, as we've all been talking with, and Daniel about. That there's a lot of work left to do to figure out how it actually opened. This is the first key ingredient would be building a corn shell, but that's by no means an open center. So I just wanna reiterate that this would be the start of a, of a process or, or the continuation of a process and not the final.
Right, and not committing directly to shining on much, sorry, correct.
Even though they sound amazing and I like that.
Yeah. What they're doing, but uh. Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, pursue pathway A, to uh, keep a childcare. Um, space and, and the Carbonette Street project, is that all you need?
There a second?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, I think Sue beat you to it. Um, okay, so that was Row and Cobb. So is there further discussion about this? Are you ready to um. To make a decision now, and I would suggest we do this as a roll call, even though there's no specific dollar amount stated. We know that there is a dollar issue going on here. So um, are you ready to um, to commit? One way or the other? We have a motion on the table, Paul, would you call the roll, please?
Trusty Cobb?
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hingo?
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins?
Yes.
Trusty LaCretzi?
Yes.
Trusty Row?
Yes.
Trusty Swisher?
Yes.
Okay, great, motion passes.
Thank you all.
Good, that's a big step.
Thank you, we send them.
Okay, um, so now we are ready for Becky Gray. Um, the Chaffey Housing Authority, thanks for coming, Becky, it's great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees and staff for making space on this agenda. I wanna just pause and shout out to Lisa and her staff and her board. This is hard work you guys are doing and it sounds like you're doing a great job. I'm excited to see you in action and I'm excited to see space uh, at the Carbonette Street site set aside for childcare. That's um, essential to a, a young and thriving community, so. Um, I provided you all with a memorandum in your packet, I'm assuming you've read it. Um, we've talked a lot about sustainable funding for the Chaffey Housing Authority, so I, I want to kind of cling to brevity. Um, but I also want to offer you a synopsis, um, particularly for those who haven't been part of this conversation before in the community. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, the Chaffey Housing Authority was formed in uh, twenty twenty, as you know, through an intergovernmental agreement. Pointe de Vista, Chaffey County and the city of Salida. Um, the funding that those three communities agreed to, to provide to the housing authority. The past four years was about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and some cents, past four years, so if we look at that. Um, total, that's about six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars over the last four years. I think it's pertinent to point out that in that same time, um, the housing authority's been able to bring in three million sixty-six thousand dollars. And some odd change, so I, I'm not a mathematician, but I, I Googled return on investment calculators. And it turns out that's over uh, three hundred and fifty percent return on your investment. So I wanna kind of couch this conversation around funding with just that simple demonstration that. Seed funding and consistent sustainable operating funding for long-term programmings can be leveraged. To bring in additional funding um, from state and federal resources. So please recognize in this memo, when I speak about funding strategies, that is not, none of this is including state and federal resources. It's just about local money to address um, the missing middle, uh, that Lisa, Lisa, yes?
Yes.
Spoke on earlier, um, that state and federal funding really doesn't reach at this point. So, that said, please remember also that the intergovernmental agreement that established this. Funding mechanism for the housing authority expires um, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And my Board of Directors um, made the decision to say, do we want to keep coming back to our member jurisdictions? Year after year to ask for this amount of money, continuing status quo? Or do we want to look at ways to increase our operating funds? Um, and keep them sustainable at the same amount every year, so that we can plan more strategically to impact housing goals. I talked briefly with you all about our strategic plan, I'll hit the four top goals. Um, policy advocacy and education is one, as you know, it's kind of essential to talk about how we might. Um, work with our development director to fast track more affordable housing products, but also monitor production goals. Um, goal two in the Housing Authority's strategic plan is uh, operating our organization excellent. We wanna be a transparent, uh, responsive, public servant organization. Um, goal number three is development of affordable housing. Um, I'll hit some statistics here in a second that show you why that's going to be a priority for us. And then number four is what I'm calling housing stability programs or housing stabilization programs. In some communities, we call it homeless prevention, and I'm, I'm trying to ease that word homeless in very carefully and slowly over time. Because it is a triggering word. I will tell you that the majority of the calls that I'm receiving right now in my office, my staff and I are receiving. Are from people who are employed and have been employed in this community for a long time and have been existing in the same home for a long time. And are now suddenly finding themselves homeless, no fault to their own, just a change in business strategy of the homeowner. Um, so stabilization looks like rental subsidies. It also looks like home modification for older adults who are aging in place. Very difficult funding to find right now, very difficult to find contractors, that can help us out quite a bit as a community. Um, because we don't, as you likely know, have an independent or assisted living facility. Um, of any kind of capacity in Chaffey County, so aging in place is gonna be very important. And then I think the last piece of, in, in housing stability programming, that my staff and I have been, uh, uh, the nut that we're trying to crack. Is how do we help employers recruit new fresh talent to our community that likely has a skillset and is gonna be coming in at a fairly decent wage? But breaking into this housing market is just not even possible. So that might look like down payment assistance matched by employers to get people into housing, be stable and move forward. So that's a brief recap of our, our strategic plan, it's on the Chaffey Housing Authority's website if you wanna dive deeper. And I'm always available to talk about it, cause this is what I love to do. Um, so the housing needs assessment, Joseph mentioned that we have an update to the twenty sixteen needs assessment. It is, has been adopted by my Board of Directors and we will be submitting a press release this week, um, pushing it out to the public. It's already on the Chaffey Housing Authority's website, if you're interested in data, uh, highly recommend it. This is a narrative brief and data-rich document, mostly focused on production goals. I do wanna hit a couple of pieces of data that I think are. They took my breath away, um, rents have increased fifty percent since our twenty sixteen needs assessment was conducted. Rent, renters making under forty thousand, which is many folks here. Have few to know publicly available rental options. Ninety-one percent of households in this county cannot enter the homeownership market. It's completely out of reach for them because of the, the price of homes. And then I think even most interesting, development dedicated to local workforce housing price points. Represents less than ten percent of the overall residential permits that have been coming out of Chaffey County. So what is getting built in Chaffey County is not for Chaffey County residents, in other words. And I think that's something we really need to consider as we, as we move forward in policy advocacy. Um, so that's kind of the, the, the context that we're in, and then if we look at what our production goals need to be. In order to meet the need of our local workforce, keep our economy stable, um, and keep our, our children in schools. Um, our housing production goals between now and twenty twenty-seven include one thousand one hundred and ten new housing units. Four hundred and forty of those need to happen pretty much right now, just to get caught up. And then the six hundred and seventy are over the next um, four years, and that's to keep up with job growth and uh, in migration demand. Of those new units, I think these are very important. Um, fifty-three percent should be one bedrooms or studios. Currently, what's being produced in Chaffey County is three bedrooms, four bedrooms, single family homes. The need to stabilize our workforce, I'm gonna say it again, is one bedrooms and studios. So when you see applications come before you, they're. So when you see applications come before you, they're heavy on those one bedrooms and studios, that's a good thing. And the, I think the kind of like historical conversation about homeownership, a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath home is really not the conversation that the generations that are coming up under us are having. Furthermore, seventy percent, seventy-seven percent of our households in Chaffey County are just one or two people. So a single bedroom works for that. About a third of our households are a single person living alone. Another thing to consider is that our housing production has basically been producing homeownership opportunities. And what the data is demonstrating that sixty percent of what we produce going forward in the future should be for rent opportunities. So kudos to the Carbonette Street project for really kind of highlighting that rental opportunity in front of us. So understanding those goals and understanding the data, my board asked, how much money would we need to make a dent in this? And I I'm starting to kind of use the mantra that the resources available to us are never going to match the demand. Like, I don't know that there's a fix to the housing crisis. This is a national issue, if not an international issue. But we do know that state and federal resources reach eighty percent AMI and below, really easy right now. We also know that through Colorado Mountain Housing Coalition and Housing Colorado's advocacy at the state level, we're pushing our state resources up to maybe a hundred and twenty, if not a hundred and forty AMI. So that's a big advocacy win. But the missing middle is still really unaccounted for. And in Chaffey County, that data demonstrates we can go up to two hundred percent AMI and still have a very difficult time to get into housing. So what could we do with local funding is inject money into development, whether it be workforce over eighty percent AMI, whether it be specifically for older adults and creating that kind of continuum of care retirement community, or whether it even be for infrastructure costs in order to seed development in locations that we know that infrastructure gap is maybe holding it back. So our projection is that seventy percent roughly of any resources that we bring in would be allocated specifically to development. So that can look like a cash injection into a developer's capital stack, bringing, of course, the the amount they have to finance down. Remember that time we did that where you could see the cost of development versus how much money it takes? So that would be a subsidy coming in very local. I already talked about home modifications for aging in place, rent subsidies and down payment assistance. I'm estimating about fifteen percent of any revenue we generate would be allocated towards that. And then the last piece is for operations and advocacy. The Chaffey County, well, all of the municipalities that belong to the authority have been incredibly generous with staff resources and time. Chaffey County also allows us to tap into legal resources. They're managing our finances for us, et cetera, right now. Once we bring all of those activities in-house, operational expenses increase. So I won't belabor that any further. So that came, when I did that analysis and kind of played with some programming types, it came up to be about a two-point-five-million-dollar budget would be my my dream ending. That would be the target if I could just make something up and have it happen. But that takes, I I don't have that kind of magic. So what my board did was create an ad hoc committee. As you know, we evaluated sales tax, short-term real estate tax, short-term rental fee and a property tax. And through that evaluation, looking at the trade-offs, this ad hoc committee came to the conclusion that a property tax was most sustainable, would generate a revenue that was adequate enough to accomplish the goals that we have before us and was sustainable over time. The sustainable over time, I I just want to touch on that for just a second. Because as as you all know, development takes years from concept to completion. And many of the agreements happen in the very early stages. So if the housing authority wants to be a partner in development, we need to be able to make financial agreements that can last over some years. And that's why a regular and consistent source of funding coming in every year is very important to be able to project that out. So following, let's see, the the full Board of Directors convened recently and was tasked with determining the appropriate number of mills to request in a property tax ballot. And we looked at a variety of things, including the mill levy card for the county that outlines every district that is collecting property taxes across the taxing districts. We looked at, you know, how much, how many mills were the hospital receiving and the libraries receiving? It's that we know that CMC just passed a roughly four-mill levy and tried to be very balanced in determining where the housing authority should land in that kind of spectrum. By statute, the housing authority could put forth a measure for five-mill increase. If I summarize my board correctly, I believe that the conversation was, let's ask for enough to do something substantial and demonstrate success, but not ask for so much, that's kind of maximum amount, that we're eclipsing some of our colleagues in the community that are also reliant upon property tax. And keep in mind that having a healthy operating budget that's sustainable over time can allow us to seek those grants. As you know, it takes a lot of effort and time to seek those grants that we can leverage this local money to bring in more state and federal resources. So that's how they landed on a three-point-five-mill property tax. Three-point-five mills, according to our county finance director, would generate two million forty-seven thousand nine hundred eight dollars and forty-two cents. You can see the breakdown of how we are anticipating and projecting allocating that revenue towards those different activities. And also you can see the outcomes on the far right side of that. So that's the total number of housing units produced a year or total number of households that received stabilization services throughout the year. So again, the resources are never going to match the need, because I'm sure the need in that column would be at least double, if not triple. But at least it's significant enough to push development in the right direction. So what's the impact on property owners? I think that's what everybody bottom line wants to know. And according again to Dan Short, our county finance director, a three-point-five-mill increase in property taxes equates to less than ten dollars a month for a residential property and less than thirty-four dollars a month for a commercial property based on the median assessed value. Google didn't help me. And again, I'm not a mathematician, so I can't tell you per hundred thousand of assessed value. But I assure you, county finance director is working on that for us as well, just to to make it a little bit easier math in everybody's head to figure out, you know, what does that mean to me? Where do I sit in the median assessed value? I'm not really sure, but we probably know what our hundred, how many hundred thousands are in our assessed value. So as you know, in the intergovernmental agreement that created the housing authority, there was a desire among the steering committee to be sure that every jurisdiction participating in this authority was adequately adequately represented in political and financial decisions made by the housing authority. And so we built in a mechanism where before the housing authority can take a measure to a ballot, we receive or we ask you all to pass a resolution, all of our member jurisdictions, a resolution in support of allowing our registered electorate in our county to vote on a measure. So the resolution that I provided along with this memo is not asking necessarily for your support in this strategy. It's allowing, it's asking for you to acknowledge that the housing authority has done due diligence, that we have the community's best interest in mind, and that we desire your support in asking our electorate to vote on a potential mill increase. I'll stop talking and answer any questions if you have them.
Just a quick one. Pontchar Springs doesn't participate in the Chaffey Housing Authority, right?
That's.
They don't, they don't have to participate in this either.
That's correct. So any measure that the housing authority places on the ballot would be open to vote for registered voters within the housing authority's political boundaries, which matches our member jurisdictions. So everything in Chaffey County except for Pontchar Springs. But I will tell you that I'll be there in August, asking them to join the housing authority.
Okay.
And sign a resolution and support as well. So I I'm not going to let that relationship wither.
I'd like to see this pass. I'd like to see us make this resolution.
Mayor, a question?
Yes, please.
I agree a hundred percent. I think it's it'd be great to have a consistent funding source. I guess one of my concerns is that I don't know if your committee talked about this. So of your options, which do you think the voters would be most willing to vote on? As we know, in past ballot issues, anybody says the word tax and they're done.
Sure.
You know, and I'm just curious if the committee talked about that at all.
Absolutely, we did. And we, we hired a political consultant to assist us with some analysis and did some polling. The polling demonstrated an overwhelming support of of public-private partnerships solving, addressing the issue, I'll say. An overwhelming support of the housing authority taking the lead. There was support for a tax, generally speaking. The support for a property tax did not bring in numbers in the poll as high as I think we would like to see. It was well over fifty percent, but I think you want it much higher at the onset than what we saw. That said, twenty-three percent of the homes in Chaffey County sit vacant. That doesn't mean that they're investment properties that are used as short-term rental. It means they're literally vacant. They're recreation homes for people who don't live and vote here. And typically, they are higher assessed value homes. So something to keep in mind as we carry this conversation forward into the community that, you know, the the smaller, more affordable homes that really workforce is occupying is not, they're on the low end of that ten dollars a month. Whereas the, those twenty-three percent of homes that are sitting empty for recreational use are definitely on the higher end of that assessed value and would pay a higher share. That was one piece of analysis when you're comparing a property tax to a sales tax that made more sense. Because a sales tax is the same across the board for everybody. Regressive by nature, it hurts those with lower incomes more. Whereas a property tax in this environment, I'm not saying across the board, but in an environment like Chaffey County where we have such a swing in the value of homes and those typically at the top end are empty and aren't registered to vote here, it kind of made more sense to spread that cost out equitably rather than equally.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a question. Becky, has a, from an education marketing campaign come together for this? And can you tell us anything about it? That's a good question. I learned a lot about fair campaign practices. Yes, I've learned a lot. I'm being careful. There is, there's a point in this process that the Chaffey Housing Authority, as public servants paid by public tax dollars, has to be silent, as does our Board of Directors, because they were appointed by you and and our other member jurisdictions. So up until that point, however, I'm free to provide data and weigh in on strategy and my staff and my board are as well. And so there is this ad hoc committee that evaluated these different tax measures, is forming a strategy and a plan and a community outreach plan so that when that trigger point comes and housing authority employees and board members step down and and follow the law, this issues committee can take it and run from there. All right, thank you. You're very welcome. It's a good question.
I have a question about or comment question about the property tax and that with it already being rent is increasing and increasing and increasing. And my rent has increased for the reasons that it's the owner of my property. It's more expensive now. So adding another property tax that will more than likely just be passed on to the renters that are already getting squeezed. How is that helpful to that?
I think that's an excellent question. And among my staff, we have been having that conversation. Again, the average increase for a median assessed value home is less than ten dollars a month. So simplistically, if a landlord tries to increase rent more than a hundred and twenty dollars in a year because that property tax was hard, it's probably not a one-to-one. So a strategy that we're taking internally is through community engagement and education. Some of the, some of the activities that we're seeing property managers engage in are potentially not following the law. The assumption I'm going to make is that there's a lack of education. And by engaging landlords and tenants, likely separately, in in different conversations and focus groups, working with the Central Colorado Realtors to provide more professional development around fair housing and around the Landlord-Tenant Act. I feel like we have opportunity to create more partnerships and kind of walk through this together than create the divisiveness that comes, you know, through the us/them conversation. It is a concern. I mean, the 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 way rents are skyrocketing is appalling, to say the least. And and just tonight, I was texting with three tenants who are leaving our community. These are employees that are operating restaurants that are leaving because their rents just went up and they can't do it anymore. And because what they can afford is so, I'll just say gross, like it's, they're not nice homes anymore. Used to, you could rent something for three hundred dollars and scrub it yourself and it was fine. We're in a bit of a crisis here. So that is an advocacy, I think, arm of what the housing authority needs to take on. And we need to make sure that we highlight successful landlord-tenant relationships and that we perhaps even mediate between those landlord-tenant relationships that aren't as successful to make sure that we're not further eroding our workforce.
Yeah, I just see this as an excuse to up the rent a hundred bucks. You know, oh, this past more expensive property tax, you know, the landlord owns six properties. All of a sudden, it's, you know, a thousand dollars more a year. He's not going to, they're not going to pay that. So that's the only thing I'm worried about that. And I understand just like Mark spoke about, that it is a more consistent funding. You know, granted, if we don't get sales tax, then, and you're based on sales tax, then it's not going to get any money.
Correct.
That's a concern I have. It doesn't mean I'm against it or not, but.
I I share that concern. And it actually really gets me fired up.
Yeah.
For the advocacy side and the community engagement and education side. And I I've learned recently that if a landlord has more than a certain number of properties, I believe it's either six or seven, they also have to be a licensed real estate agent. So we have a lot of opportunities to work through the Colorado, Central Colorado Realtors Association to increase education around what is and isn't acceptable for property managers. I'm not saying all property managers are bad, by the way. A lot of good ones out there, a lot of really good landlords out there, but it just takes a couple of bad apples, right?
Yeah, and that's probably a side thing. I think getting more information to renters to know what their rights are. Because there's a lot of friends of mine in this community that are just gouged places that are not adequate.
I believe you.
Yeah, so I just worry that this is just another way to gouge people, but I want to fund your program so we can help people. So. It's hard.
That's fun.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Good conversation.
Any other questions or comments for Becky?
Couple of comments. Um, in the last three years, my property tax has more than doubled on our little home. I can understand that what you're asking for is necessary. I don't know if I'd have gone on property tax to get it. I don't think that people, I don't have a rental. I don't think that people, I don't have a rental. I have one home and I have one business. So I pay business tax and I pay the other. And yes, our taxes have been increased dramatically. So if you take a couple that scrounge together and buy a home ten years ago, they have more years of payments. The increased taxes truly are a burden on them. But I also believe that your program has a right to be put on the ballot for the people to decide what to do. So I would like to make sure that we approve for that to be put on the ballot. For the people.
Is there, oh, Gina, you're the second, sorry. Okay, so that's Swisher LaCretzi.
Point, point, I remember. Should we include resolution number fifty-six within that motion?
Is that?
Yes, resolution number fifty-six.
Thank you.
There's some kind of screwy wording in paragraph G. I wonder if that could be cleaned up a little bit. It's, you know, just a matter of not agreeing the subject with the verbs. I could be more specific.
Yes, please.
It should say the Town of Buena Vista's Board of Trustees further finds that a dedicated revenue stream to the authority furthers the goals of the authority. I think the rest of it's okay.
Okay.
But it should be the Board of Trustees, not just the trustees. And then that a dedicated revenue stream. And then under the resolution itself, where it says the trustees of the Town of Buena Vista should be just resolved as follows rather than resolved. Thank you. Other than that, I think it's good. I don't think we have a roll call on this one. So, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you all so much. I appreciate your time and your rich discussion too. I will say, trustee Swisher, that internally, my staff and I are trying to figure out how that stuff, housing stabilization piece of the pie can be used to offset that pain point. Because we are recognizing that it exists.
And we do have businesses that are recovering from COVID and struggling. Our business fortunately is not afford for a hundred for it. But there's a lot of people out there that will be struggling with what you want. And that's why I think it has a right to go to the people.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you all very much.
So now we're going to go into some more contract type stuff. Could we take five minutes to stretch our legs?
About eight.
I want eight minutes to stretch our legs.
Yeah.
Okay. We're breaking nine twenty. All right, we are on IMC of the business items, the water treatment plant expansion project. And this is John maybe or?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I don't even know where to start because we got this. So to make up my busted memo, I give you guys a brief description of the notice of award recommendation, standing team. We don't have to look at it right now, but I think at some point it kind of gives us some time to kind of reflect on maybe some of the information that the kind of presenter share with the board. So yeah, where to start? So yeah, this is kind of walking up the ladder. New faces coming in, board members and board members that have been around with this project since we started it back in almost like two thousand eighteen. So from the Water Advisory Board, information that we shared with the town and the Water Advisory Board, the Providence proposal, the work that Al Smith did for us and some of the work that staff did as well. And I just kind of take a little trip back in time in two thousand twenty. We produced an RFQ and RFP. We wanted to go in with JBA to help us with a preliminary design report, pilot study and things like that. So this is kind of where we're going. The most recent agreement that we had with JBA was in two thousand twenty-one where we agreed to have a thirty percent design for the water plant project as well as senior procurement. So this is that portion of that agreement that we had with JBA. And so a little bit of background information, I think that we got to cover. This is a portion of the project that involves the state revolving funds, CDPHE loan. And so the OBCs and the contractors costs are talking, are talking now and about to talk a little bit more. So where we advertised and we had a pre-bid meeting. At the pre-bid meeting, we had five prime contractors interested in our project. When we had the bid opening, we had one. So one of the things that I can reflect on, and I think that we all can reflect on and recognize is that everybody's very busy. And we have a fairly aggressive timetable, fairly aggressive. It's gonna take a few years, so crazy aggressive. It's gonna take. The reason for a lot of the information that I have in here was I wanted to be able to convey that Stanek gave us a very a very good proposal. They worked their, they worked their tail off. They gave us the document that was creative, covered a lot of the things and met the RFP requirements. Along with my staff report, I have a letter of support from JBA. Clarify a couple of things. So the the funding sources, the Water Enterprise Fund, and just for clarification, you know, we have two point four seven eight million in that funding account. So just wanted to clarify that. Don't recommend doing staff reports at five o'clock in the morning. Not by design. So a lot of what I have on my memo, JBA also reiterates in their letter of support. We have an agreement on page seventy. That agreement is a little unique to us. It's kind of a portion of our PSA, our professional service agreement. Town's legal team reviewed it and it meets our requirements. And then on page ninety, I dropped in the standard proposal for perspective. It's quite an elaborate document. I don't expect that everybody maybe had time to read the whole thing. But in a nutshell, this face paper that I brought tonight kind of covers a lot, kind of a reader's digest, kind of breakdown of what we're doing. So what they're looking at is basically costing out based on where we're at right now with thirty percent design. And so moving forward, yeah, it's maybe one of the smallest monetary amounts for resolution of procurement that you usually see. But this is only a portion of the project. So this is the first piece. And so what we're asking Stanek to provide is say some cost estimates on what these, you know, what it's actually going to cost to do this. So we have engineering, OBCs, opinion of our probable cost, but when we get into the real world, we start to see that sometimes there's discrepancies between that. And so this will help us with our loan amount. This will help us with our securing our loan with CDPHE as well. I wanted to maybe just kind of elaborate on what, you know, if anybody wants to kind of dive into what the construction management risk really means. And so really, it's a, it's a, it's a procurement opportunity that I haven't participated in. I don't know if the town has participated in either. But what it really does is it, you know, kind of puts the contractor at risk. So maximum cost numbers come in. So we don't see work orders, change orders and things like that. So the contractor is kind of like the language says, he's more at risk than the owner. So it's favorable to us. One of the things that I think that we have to recognize is like, right now, there's a lot of contingency numbers that are coming. So because of a few factors. One is supply and demand. There's a lot going on in our country right now from manufacturing limitations and with the, with the American infrastructure. There's a lot of people building and then along with part of that is the federal funding that comes with the SRS. So there's Build America, Buy America, and those terms have a requirement, specification hasn't quite been defined. So that should be coming and we should have that identified soon. You know, that's not anything that we can work with, but CDPHE through correspondence is letting us know that, you know, there should be some things that should be clearer, more clear moving forward. There's a lot of electrical components going into this project. There's pumps, there's motors, there's telemetry. There's, you know, a lot of things electronic wise that generally aren't produced in the United States. So I could see some of the contingencies with that when engineers and consultants are quite sure what those are going to cost. So this will help us, you know, get that number closer. I think that's about all I had on that. I, again, I wanted to, you know, I really wanted to put most of the proposal into the document so that you could see how thoughtful they were with their, with their with their proposal. It's very close. I mean, it's very close to what the OBCs were. We were hoping for maybe a little bit less, but we see some high contingencies in areas that are, that are kind of undetermined right now. So the electric is pretty high right now for some of these things. But this keeps us on track for our, for our project. for our for our project and to you know, get this moving forward. And yeah, this this award would would really help us to to keep our track with the the loan arrangements that are in their little timelines that we have with the SRS project.
Sean, real quick, just out on, we did use the C Mar construction manager at risk with our police station project and don't want to speak for Joseph as the project lead, but from my perspective, that's been very beneficial to get the contractor on early. And and then town still has the opportunity to move away from that contractor before construction starts, is my understanding. But ideally, it doesn't go that way. You stick with them and you end up getting probably the best pricing and the timeliness of it all. So I think it's I think it's a good model. We have used it with the police station. So.
So these guys actually came up with some real cost savings in their plan and JBA agrees with that, right?
Yeah, JB does, you know, and you know, because we're only, you know, 30%, you know, right now. Did get 60% design emails to me today from JBA. There's some creative solutions. So, you know, boots on the ground, you know, the the opportunity to make people that do this, people that build this kind of stuff, they see opportunities for cost savings and they're going to do that to the owner or the rep and the engineering team.
I didn't have one question on on page 74. It it deals with verification of valid employment or citizenship, I think. On item two, under section C on verification, it says that the C Mar firm shall not use either the E-Verify program or the department program procedures to undertake pre-employment screening of job applicants. It seems like that should say that they shall use.
Catherine can legal can speak to that.
Okay, is she on?
Yes, she raised her hand.
Good evening. So actually, um, the language is correct. It's from a statute, but I will say that needs to be removed. That's no longer permitted under Colorado law. That statute was repealed. So your question's kind of moot because it all needs to come out, but that is the verbatim statutory language.
Okay. So what are we doing? Removing item two or the whole paragraph, whole section?
It's the verification.
Oh, it's all the it's starting like the page before on page 73 with number nine, illegal alien. So all of that section needs to come out. And I didn't notice if there were any affidavits attached to the agreements, but those would also need to be removed.
Recommend a motion be made to if if the board wants to approve this resolution, just amending to to remove that section nine with final review from town legal.
Okay. And are we under any time pressure to get this signed?
When are we not under time pressure, Sean? I think we could turn it around pretty quick. That's actually standard length, but Catherine's pointed out as something we've taken out of our standard agreements. So I think it's pretty quick, you know.
Yeah, so you can clean it up and Sean signing.
Are we ready for a question? Yes, I moved to accept resolution number 57 after striking section nine with consult with our county attorney. Does that sound right?
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have Cobb Swisher. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A bunch of passes. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Thanks, Catherine.
So we are moving along. Item D, the professional services agreement with MW Golden Constructors. This has to do with the police station.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide a very brief overview. As you recall, yeah, I believe on June 12th meeting, we presented this this sort of interesting structure where we, at that time, were unsure about whether or not we had received the DOLA grant award for this project. And as such, we did not want to sign a final contract with the full guaranteed maximum price construction cost for this project, knowing that if we did get a DOLA grant, it would become ineligible to be used if we had pre authorized those funds. So you all authorize a forward contractor, a partial contract with the contractors to be able to start the work. And then now we have received as of today, the final DOLA grant agreement. And so we are in the clear to authorize a full guarantee maximum price construction contract with MW Golden. So this is the exact same GMP exhibit that was attached to your June 12th board meeting. The overall budget dollars have not changed. It's a guaranteed maximum price of about $4 million for the whole project that does include about 8% contingencies already. And to speak to the benefits of the the CMAR relationship, not only did they find value engineering during the design process, but already in construction, we found additional $150,000 in savings that will be added to that contingency and will hopefully end up coming back to us through the project, barring any unforeseen circumstances. So I just want speak to the integrity that I've seen in MW thus far, the expedience, they follow through, they raise questions, their subs are actively looking for savings for us. So I've been very impressed thus far. And we are requesting your authorization to to execute that full contract.
So is there a motion in regard to resolution number 58?
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 58.
Is there a second? Second, Swisher Cobb. This should be a roll call.
Yes, please.
Follow what you call the roll, please.
Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hinga.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes.
Trusty the Kretzy.
Yes.
Trusty Rowe.
Yes.
Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have a question about building lot sales. What's going on with that? It says two stars and blank.
My apologies. That's a spurious inclusion when we were contemplating the situation in which we did not get the DOLA award.
Right.
It included contingencies that the proceeds from the belt and lot sales would be used in the project.
Right.
As you can see from that table, we zeroed that out because we have received all the funds. So those belt and lot sale proceeds are simply added to our general fund balance and will be so, my apologies for that. Cool. Thanks.
Great. Now we're at the 2023 budget kickoff.
Who's ready?
Bring in the trumpets.
I expect to be starting this. Hey, that's okay.
A pretty, a nice presentation.
So I will do my best to get through this, but it's also important. So stop me questions. This is certainly what it is, what it says on the agenda at kickoff with you all. For those that have been through a budget cycle, a lot of this will be a repeat. But I think it's important with the board to understand the process of it and why this is important and kind of what to expect over the next few months. We also, this is a little early and compared to our typical cycle because giving the trend, knowing that we're having a transition in leadership. I wanted to get this process started and underway so that we can focus in on all the other projects going on when the next town administrators onboard and starting to train up. So let's jump into this. So first of all, a quick explanation overview of our of our funding sources and how all that ties together. So our our primary funding source revenue source, as you all know, probably is our town sales tax. That that makes up vast majority of our revenue. And that is a a percentage that is split up between two of our funds, 80% of those the town sales tax goes to our general operating fund and 20% goes directly to our street fund. One of the big changes from last year coming into this year is we had the All-Hazard Response Fund as an additional funding source that was coming into our general fund. That, as you all know, was shut down this starting this year. And so going into next year, it's one of those things to keep in mind that will no longer be an ongoing funding source. The good thing is it did end with a sizable fund balance. We will transfer 340,000 from that fund into our general fund this year. That was already part of our budget. Next year, we have about that same amount remaining from that fund. So it's a good opportunity towards one-time capital expenditures, but.
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
Since we don't have the All-Hazard Response Funding anymore, but we will recreational marijuana sales tax.
Yes.
To kind of replace it.
I would not say replace. I would not say replace. Help offset.
Help offset.
We are very new. We have received two months, a month and a half worth retail marijuana sales tax. So we're still very early on and we only have one operator in place. It will help. It will definitely help.
And the other one should be in place by.
That timeline you all gave them. So by by next year, if they meet their time, their deadlines, we they should be up and going for 2020.
And if they don't meet their deadline, you can open it up to someone else to sell it.
We certainly could. But yes, it is a very important funding source going ongoing.
Okay.
Absolutely. And 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 that, just to reiterate, that is split into two two funds. The special revenue fund that we have set up is 5% that comes from marijuana sales. That is restricted based on the ballot language and the board makes decisions on how that money is spent. It does not go into the general fund. It will go, it will be allocated to the capital improvement fund as we set projects with it. The other is regular sales tax from it, which which flows in through this through this route right here. Property tax is a much smaller portion of our of our revenue, but but is part of it. And then we have other things like grants and interests and little pieces like that. And then what we do for capital improvement, our capital projects, grants are a big part of that. We now have the marijuana special revenue fund. But we typically carve off a piece of our general fund budget each year to transfer to the capital improvement fund. This year, that was upwards of $550,000, $550,000. That's higher than in previous years. Looking forward next year, that will probably drop back down into the end of the $350,000 range. So it's it's an important part of that equation, how we balance operating operating expenses and what we carve off for for ongoing capital. Next slide is a couple of other funds. We have the Conservation Trust Fund. That comes from our state lottery proceeds allocation. That's about $35,000 a year. And we do use that. There are restrictions for that, but we transfer to capital improvement fund and that goes towards recreation, open space, trails, those types of things. And then again, this is kind of a redundant here, but 20% of our 2.5% town sales tax or half a percent goes directly to the street fund. On the enterprise funds, we have the water fund and that is funded primarily through our fee structure and grants, things like that. It's a very active fund these days, as you know. And then Stormwater Fund is a fund that was set up five, six years ago. And a portion of our water bill is set a flat fee, three, $3 for residential, $6 for commercial water accounts pay into that each month. So it's slowly building up, but that's a that's a a fund that Sean and his team can utilize for stormwater projects. And then the airport airport fund is also a separate fund, enterprise fund that primarily fuel sales and fees and testing and all that good stuff. But capital projects primarily are coming from FAA federal dollars and C dot state dollars.
Philip, can you tell me what that CWR PDA is?
Corpda. Corpda. So that is what we, for instance, are are engineering the $300,000 grant we received.
Yeah.
Is is a CDPHE, but it's all nested together. It's a state agency that we get grant funding.
Okay, thank you.
All right, budget timeline. So kicking off today, giving you an overview and start to set the stage of what to expect next. The we've we've already started utilizing our tool for the budget, which is ClearGov, a web-based tool. We've started using a couple of years ago. And we've launched that. And so staff is starting to use that to input 2023 operating budget numbers into that. So that will happen between now and the end of August. And then starting in September, we will start getting into some additional meetings with the Board of Trustees, public meetings where we're diving into details of the budget. And then we're involving the community in this process as well. Advisory boards have opportunities to come and work sessions and and talk about what they're doing and their vision for for next year's budget. And then what we hope to do is in November, we're really solidifying the budget. We're not making drastic changes to it. We have a good idea of where it's at. There might be some trade-off decisions that the board's making, but it's really it's really taking shape and we know we know where we're at. And then we adopt, the board adopts the budget in the last meeting of the year, which is in December. If we don't get that done in the first meeting in December, we get a second meeting in December to get that done. So we have to have an adopted budget by the end of December or it reverts back to the prior year's budget.
It's a legal question as far as being present for that budget adoption. If you're not, can you zoom and still make that decision?
Yes, our policy lets trustees participate remotely on on a legislative matter like that. If it was quasi judicial, you could not vote on this matter.
Thank you.
Sounds like you've got some plans.
No, you know, you just never know. Talking about other people.
All right. I don't want to read this chart, but what's important here is we we had a really good spring session, strategy session with and from that, what we do is we take themes that align with our vision, our collective vision statement, and and that vision statement, we have environment, water, economic vitality, infrastructure and community. So we try to put themes around our goals and and objectives. And so these are the things that that I pulled out from our notes from that session and aligning with things that are already underway that will carry over into next year. And a good example of that's really under our water supply and treatment, which is clearly a priority, but a lot of these projects will continue forward into next year. So staff takes the takes these overarching themes and areas of focus as we start to prioritize within staffing level and then discussions with advisory boards, capital projects, and then potential proposals, changes to our operating. So like staffing capacity, for example, in the rec department, special events, just to name one very specific area. So these are very important. Happy to answer any questions that you may have with how I captured these or anything with that. So moving ahead, I did want to share some thoughts about overarching themes, I guess I would call it, and and our approach. So creating the draft budget, we have to first start off with how do we how we project revenue and I have Creating the draft budget, we have to first start off with how do we, how we project revenue and I have a, a following slide about this in detail, but. Right now, I'm using a three percent increase over twenty twenty two, so. We, right now, we have actuals through May and then we have budgeted months for the rest of the year. So I'm using a three percent growth on the, on those numbers for both the town and our county allocation. Talk more about that in a second. To reiterate something we've had for the last five years, staff comes to the board with a structurally balanced budget, meaning that our. Our expenses don't outpace our, our projected revenues. The board can always make decisions about spending in, in excess of that, which would be spending in the fund balance. But staff wants to let the board make that decision, now there will be projects that we already know about. That we will include in the draft budget, uh, for instance, our water. Our water expansion project, that is spending into the water fund, fund balance, for example. But, uh, we try to fit in priority capital projects in the structurally balanced budget approach. Inflation clearly is, is a, is a big topic in our next agenda item, we'll talk more about that, but. That, that is, uh, playing with our numbers a bit, uh, both on the app, operating and capital side and operating, it's clearly our, our. Pay plan and then just ongoing expenses. Clearly, uh, projected growth pretty fast in terms of revenue. Uh, increasing staffing capacity is a, is an area of focus and I'll reiterate that. Sean did a good job including the pictures of trash and things like that, just to hit that point, but, uh. Uh, so we're, we're looking closely at staffing capacity in the areas that are strained. We set a community grant allocation each year in our, in our budget and this is, uh, our partnership with Chefe Community Foundation. Where they, uh, take a lump sum of money, they have a great process for taking grant applications from our local nonprofits. And, and we would propose that we continue doing that right now, based on projected revenues. We're right around fifty three thousand dollars and some change for that offering. Again, um, kind of hitting the point of we, we will be talking a lot about fund balance and, and opportunity. Why is that, especially the un, the unrestricted portion of our fund balance? If the board is looking to, uh, spend towards other capital, uh, projects that don't fit in our opera, in our, uh, twenty twenty three budget, so. That is an option, but we, we protect that, right? We build it up and then we allocate it for large capital projects and then we've seen success with that. Over the years with the, uh, baseball field and the partnership with the school. That's that, that fund balance down. We're doing that again right now at the police station, but we, even after the police station project, we will have fund balance to, to consider. So that's, that's good news. And then just this ongoing challenge, uh, that, that I know all of our local businesses and, and people are feeling that it's. We, we, we had, we were a very ambitious, twenty twenty two is a very ambitious year in terms of projects, capital projects. And you've seen that where even, even if we can fit it into the budget, we still face capacity constraints with our sub. With our contractors, subcontractors, maybe our own staffing at times. So, uh, trying to balance that as, as much as possible is what we choose, uh, to put in as priorities. Moving along, just, I, explanation, a little bit more detail about the sales tax projections. Uh, again, I'm, I'm not going to read all that, but just to, just to state that. Some historical context of what our, our sales taxes have done from year to year. Uh, we have been in a period of quite a bit of growth year to year. We don't expect that to continue, we've seen this year already that that's not down, we're still up by, sorry, ten percent this year over last year. But it's soft and we know that inflation plays a role in sales tax numbers as well, so. Uh, that's why we're kind of sticking with that three percent, we know it's a conservative number, but it's, I, I feel like it's a good place to be. Any questions to this point, oh, sorry, one, one other thing I did highlight there that the all hazard fund no longer is there. But there are other things like, uh, Cindy mentioned about the marijuana taxes. The sales tax rebate for the true value water line has, falls off the books this year, so another thing that helps our budget going into next year. But any, any questions about this part?
The true value water line?
Um, it was an agreement with, uh, the developers of what, what is now Ace Hardware with value of that area. Um, where they put in a water line extension along highway twenty four to reach that area. At that time, the town had entered into an agreement that they would get a rebate, sales tax rebate each year. Um, to help pay off the cost of that water line. Uh, that took ten years, eight years, ten years, yeah. So it's pretty exciting for that and that was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And again, we were, we were realizing additional sales tax from the development business out there, but it's. What happens if, uh, everything goes into recession next year and our sales tax drops below budget? We adjust, we, we did that at early twenty twenty when we didn't know what was going to happen. The board has a twenty seven percent, uh, restricted reserve policy each year in our budget, so.
What is that, it's twenty seven percent of expenditures or?
Uh, I, I believe it's expenditures, it might be projected revenues, but those things typically equal, so. Okay. Uh, well, again, I won't talk through all these, but starting to capture and just highlight these, these large. Carryover from year to year, they have complex funding, that's always fun when you're trying to fit all those pieces into the budget, but. We have a lot going on and this hardly captures, uh, medium and smaller sized projects, but. Anyway, it's not, and, ooh, I think I got to the end. That was quick, but.
There's more, off to a good start.
Yeah. Any questions at this point or?
Thank you.
Always Arizona Bridge.
Okay, uh, Phil, would you like to continue on with the pay plan?
Okay. Similar topic. Just a lot more words, um, so the board, um, asked me to take a look at. Uh, our pay plan and our staff wages, salaries, all that stuff. Back in June, knowing that inflation was reaching eight, nine percent, uh, year to year. At that point, um, and knowing that our, our pay increases coming into twenty twenty two, obviously our staff is not making as much. In terms of buying power as they were a year ago, uh, so that's very concerning and we knew that a lot of other. Businesses and, and Colorado municipalities were looking at this and considering mid year adjustments, so. This is, this is my comeback to the board with what we've looked at. And, uh, just to kind of highlight what, what I've estimated here in the area is probably somewhere between eight, nine percent. Inflation or consumer price index increase, um, from June twenty twenty one to June twenty twenty two. So that's, that's obviously having an impact, uh, we are seeing that to hire right now. For our open positions, we're having to offer higher starting pay. And that, if we continue that without trying to bring our existing staff up a little bit. We'll start to compound a problem, we'll create a problem where, yeah, you get it, so.
Everyone's going to move to Melican.
Exactly, yeah.
They have ten percent.
So I, I, we put all, quite a bit of analysis in this, um, I won't try to explain everything, but. We have a, two different pay plans in town, we have a police pay plan, which is a stepped pay plan, it's very structured. As police officers and police departments typically are, but it's based on time in the position, the, um, your hierarchy and all of that. So we typically from year to year, year to year, apply a COLA, cost of living, um, increase on that pay plan. The rest of our employees are under what's called a merit pay plan. But it's a, a range of job, um, groupings from one to thirteen. And it has ranges, right, so that we have flexibility to pay people based on their skillset, their performance. Uh, and their experience, all those types of things. So it's, it's more fluid, um, what we try to do is compare each year how we're paying our, our staff. Uh, on all of those factors and we're trying to pay competitive, right, especially our top performers. And, and that midpoint of the, of that range is what we consider competitive, competitive pay rate. So a hundred percent of midpoint is a competitive, uh, competitive wage. So you can see at our current pay plan, uh, not inflated. We, we're getting close, um, we were way off of this five years ago. And so we've done a good job kind of keeping up with that. If you apply an inflation rate to that, you can see that it quickly pushes us behind, right? So not, not a surprise there, but I did want to show, I kind of grouped our pay grades to see that we are pretty consistent from. The different roles in our organization. Okay, um, for reference, um, it was just kind of a collection, uh, from other municipalities, what they're, what they're doing or not doing. On this matter, good, all over the board, um, set of data. So I, just to point out other considerations here, so, uh, boy, I sure would love to hand out ten percent, uh, pay raises to everybody and. And be a hero and all the departments, you know, department heads be excited about that. That is not, um, I think a, a wise thing to do, there's a lot of other factors here, uh, primarily, um. Inflation is going to continue to change, it will fluctuate, it's projected to probably start coming down. So assuming that it's just going to be at this current percentage, um, is not. Yeah, not, it won't be that way, uh, we don't know what potential recession might look like if we start that next year. All of that stuff, um. Plus our budgets can't handle that kind of increase, um, it would consume basically all of our available. Funds in twenty twenty three, uh, for capital projects and other priorities that might come up. So other factors to consider there, so I, I did look at a few different options and showed you pros, cons and then, and then impacts to the budget. And one would be, hey, let's try to match this CPR, this inflation rate, eight percent COLA effective August. For all current staff, um, you know, pros, cons to that. Um, and then you can see it's a pretty sizable budget impact, uh, for twenty twenty three. Next, option number two is trying to address, uh, what we know is an issue right now. Knowing that we would also probably be looking at a COLA in twenty twenty three that's in this ballpark, probably a little bit higher. It's just getting it done earlier to help our staff. Uh, where they're at now, so you can, you can see, um, much more manageable number, still giving. The town flexibility in the budget next year for other, for other, uh, priorities and, and things. Another option is a one time payment that, um, you know, uh, kind of like a bonus payment. Big con to that is it's, it's taxed at a much higher percentage, about thirty percent, so. Employees aren't really realizing that full amount until they get through their. Tax return process next year, a- anyway, so, uh, pretty sizable con there, it is, uh, great because it. Doesn't do anything to our budget at this stage, uh, for next year. But is higher upfront, uh, because it's a full year bonus amount as opposed to the remaining, you know, a, a COLA increase for the remainder of the year. That's why that number's there. Uh, and then again, just to, to be, uh, fair to the board on all your options, uh, no change, that is certainly an option to consider. Although I, I think knowing that we've got some important, uh, roles to fill, um. Could cause some problems, right, so, recommendation. That I would have is to look at option two, which would be the four percent or thereabouts, uh, COLA. Uh, effective in August. And, uh, it, it can be contained in twenty twenty two and still leaves quite a bit of flexibility for twenty twenty three. And helps, doesn't fully meet the inflation rate, but certainly would help our staff at this point. Questions?
Good, nice analysis, thank you for all the research. And staff supports option two. Sounds good to me.
But for option two there, the merit based increases, that means everybody's getting a four percent increase COLA, but then you still have wiggle room to try to. Keep talent, for example, if they're getting out of beds and go well beyond that, so that, that. The budget may increase or fluctuate here or there based off of some boys, but not large, not, not across the board stuff.
Right, correct, and, and we would still then focus in on twenty twenty three budget. Uh, really focusing in on merit, um, so bringing COLA up, if this, if the, if the board approves that one, we're bringing COLA up a bit now. Um, additional salary changes for twenty twenty three would be focused more on merit. Possibly some more COLA, we'll see, but I think merit would be the emphasis in twenty twenty three. Performance base.
Do we know, because I know there's been already turnover in the past several weeks?
Yes.
Is it, how closely tied is it to this and do you think this would have helped the situation?
I wish I had Jana here with me, she does all the exit interviews and I haven't, uh, heard from the recent ones, but I do know that, um, the combination. The workload and the cost, the cost of living compared to the salaries that we have to offer are pretty common. People really enjoy being here, working here, uh, but we do have a lot going on and that is straining people. Um, I think the cost of living is impacting us all like we've been talking about, so I think it, it does definitely play a factor into it.
Any other thoughts on it? Somebody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to, uh, approve option two and, um. Just think that we really do have a great staff, we want to keep them, we want to try to help them, I wish we could do more, but I think this is a really reasonable approach.
Uh, is there a second, okay, so I got Cobb and Jenkins. Uh, no, I've. Lot of it for a moment, um, what about people who've just started?
Yeah, um, we were thinking about trying to put a cutoff. On the higher day, we really have one employee that has started in the last. Sean had a few parks people started at the beginning of the year, but, um, I think that they need to fall in this, we did have one, a person in our finance department start. This, uh, two weeks ago. Um, we could certainly consider putting a, a date. You know, applies to current staff, starting before a certain date, I just, yeah.
So people that started later wouldn't get that, they would go back to the lower base rate?
They would just, they were there, they wouldn't receive the COLA, they wouldn't receive the increase.
I mean, if you hired. Somebody August first, they wouldn't get it.
Well, for, I, what we're, what, what I was pointing out is the people that we're hiring now are, are coming in at a higher rate. To get them higher, we're having to offer.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, because they, they wouldn't want to leave those people.
Right, right.
Out of a COLA rate.
Correct.
And some of the worst inflationary effects are hitting right now, you know, the interest rate on home mortgages or, um, price of gas.
Yeah.
Heating, you know, heating gas, that's going to be a.
It is, and we don't want to perpetuate the inflation by just raising our, our wages exponentially, right? Um, thankfully, we have a budget that. That's just doesn't, not an option for us, but that's why that four percent seemed like a pretty reasonable.
And does that close the gap between? Earlier employees?
It does.
Okay, so it's something like, oh, they get four percent, great, this guy's still making more.
Yes, that's, that's a really good question, um, that was part of the analysis, I didn't put that in there because I didn't want to single any, anyone out necessarily. In a small organization, but yeah, that, comparing that, uh, does close that gap with some of the new hires.
Okay, so, um. This will be a roll call. Okay, so um, this will be a roll call item. Any further discussion first? Or would you call the roll, please?
Can I just ask for a point of clarification on the motion? You had talked about going with option two. Right, but that doesn't include clarification as far as the timeline of people hired, you know, from. June twenty twenty-two to now, do we want to include that in the motion? Are you want to specify a date?
I don't think it's all that necessary. It's up to the board. It's not going to change these numbers significantly.
Trustee Swisher.
Um, did we make the motion to go with option two?
Yeah, trustee Cobb made the motion to go with option.
Was there a second?
Trustee Jenkins.
Okay, I guess I was somewhere.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Hinger.
Yes.
And trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Thank you all.
That was good analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have uh the opioid settlement funds. The meaning.
So uh very, very quickly, um, taking direction from the on this, uh last time we discussed it. There was a preference to pool the money countywide and and aim it towards public health programming um to help people. And and the area of addiction and things like that, the the framework of this program. So uh we have established a draft IGA, which is in your packet. Uh, that would pool the money at a county level. Uh, essentially what that means is by the July thirty-first deadline, I will opt in to the town receiving. The annual disbursement, which is roughly fifteen hundred dollars. It's not a lot. But then per this IGA, we would send that to the county to be pooled with the other municipalities. Salida has approved this. Ponce is going to be uh putting it on their agenda and the county will look to approve this at their first meeting in August. So I think it achieves what the board board's desire was and their strong support of of going this route. Uh, we did meet with public health and they and they do feel like they can utilize these funds for the uh purposes that that they're restricted to, so. You need a motion for that?
Yes, I do.
Yes, please.
So we're all pulling the money and it will be given to the Chaffey County Public Health to. Use Stacy.
Yeah, because it was such a small amount.
Yes. And why they might be able to do something like that.
Yes, and and one clarification that that legal did point out to me, which I think is is important. Is that this IGA doesn't give the town board much say. And specifically how those funds are used, but I felt out of efficiency, public health is going to be the expertise anyway, so.
Okay, so um, we need a motion, but what is it?
Colorado Regional Opioid, opioid, you know, government.
I know, I'm wrong, sorry, Mark's got it.
What is it, Mark? A page or is there a page?
One ninety-two. A motion to approve the Colorado Regional.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so I got Jenkins, Rowe. Um, and let's do a roll call on it.
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Hinger.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Yes.
Trustee Will.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
The motion passes. Okay, in the interest of time, um. With trustee staff interaction, rather than my calling on people, I'd like for you to just speak up if you have something you'd like to say.
Support the Chaffey County Fair this week.
Hmm, okay.
I was going to speak to next session.
Oh, yes, would you like to?
Yeah, um, I spoke with the mayor and also Philip about the. Working at fading west and that growing into a contract negotiations and. Any formal agreement conversations might be coming up in next session, uh you know, if it's not next session. After I just wanted to, I have spoken with many of you individually and privately, but here on open forum that I'll. I just want to recuse myself or all recuse myself from any official discussions and any official votes that are going on with. Full discussions with fading west. I don't personally think I have any conflicts of in uh interest necessarily, particularly given my position there. But I also don't want the appearance of any. Like a priority that if I don't vote in one way that and then leave, that people think I had a grudge and then voted one way and stay and something happens down the road. People thought it was just tied, just for appearance sake, that's for me to step out, you know, process.
Also, comments I want to make?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Or I have two things I want to talk about. Uh, one of them is, as a lot of you guys might have heard, is that the take two program. Was put on pause this week. And and for those who don't know, that's the uh the inmates from the Department of Corrections. They work in a lot of businesses here in town. Um, so a lot of our restaurants, the, you know, majority back of houses inmates and. I've worked with a lot of those guys and they're amazing workers, really great guys. And um it's really putting a huge burden on our service industry. Um, in the in the town right now, we keep saying, oh, sales tax are up, everything's good, and it really is a house of cards. Um, our service industry in this town, and this is kind of, you can kind of see that, um. This past week with this happening, or two weeks is that, you know, businesses are closing on weekdays and. There's very few options, so I think it's important to really uh be uh. Respectful and uh. With a lot of these businesses, because they're having a hard time right now, and uh this really goes to show. Um. Our needs and what we need in this community is that there's not a lot of. Housing or workers or workforce housing here and uh it's it. With this happening, it just bottom falls out, so, you know, the. I've heard there's, those interested parties are working to get that remedied. The the reasoning that was paused had nothing to do with our.
With our county even.
Our county was up in the the Delta, I heard, but um, yeah, just keep aware of that, that that's a. Huge uh struggle right here in the middle of the summer. Um, and in kind of relation to that, um, you know, some of us received an email from a citizen and. About. A couple items and one of them was potential to development on town land up by the rodeo grounds and. That's something that I've always been talking about randomly from time to time. That we have land up there and if there's a way to potentially development, um, I know we lost a lot of the uh. Potential apartments with the stackhouse annexation not going through, so any way we can get some more apartments in the future would be great. Think about, that's it.
Yeah, good. That was a good email and I have maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, where are they talking?
Pictures and maps.
Anybody else have comments to make? Okay, um, so the next thing on our agenda is to go into executive session. Uh, so I would like a motion from somebody to um.
Make a motion to go into the executive session.
The people who remain are.
You got it. So for, yeah, for exec session, we'll have Catherine, Joel and Joseph and myself.
Sean.
And Sean.
Yeah, okay.
Sean.
You want to do a vote on that?
Sure.
You have to say that reasons.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Uh, no, but I think you do have to say the.
Yes, so who the participants are going to be?
Well, the we have to read the reasons.
All right, okay. And we'll do these one at a time or all three at once?
All three together.
Okay, so, um. The topic of the executive sessions will be to determine.
You can say the reason.
Yeah, okay, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to. Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six, that for two parenthesis E, I mean, for parenthesis E. And each one has a little bit different topic. So are we clear to to name the topics?
Well, is it, do we go into all of them together? Okay.
Yeah, we can go all together and then.
So the first one is concerning the potential acquisition of land and water rights. The second one is concerning a water service agreement. And the third one is to give direction to the town attorney to a staff to establish town administrator terms. So, um, and we've we've had a motion and a second. So now we vote whether to go in the executive session. So all in favor, say aye.
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 You're opposed? Okay.